I'm gonna call the meeting to order, six o'clock. First on the agenda is Georgette Zenita for Unique Souls Canine Training at 23 West Bacon Street, if you'd like to come up and just talk about your...
Everything's in that packet in order of the agenda.
Hi. Alright, so...
I'm sitting.
It's 23?
It's the waiting day of this building.
Okay, I'm like, wait, that's the same man.
What's that?
My opposite.
Yeah, you can sit down if you want. I don't know why the podium's there.
Yeah. It's a... Don't go by the podium.
I'm not sure what they're coming to us.
You get to use that. So I took it as.
I'm not gonna take that.
Probably.
Okay. Alright, so, what you gonna be doing?
So, where our plan is to do dog training. We already own a dog training business. We've done a business, um, 2018. We already have license and we hope it's not going north of that road, but we left north of that road to expand our business. We do private lessons, we do classes. We are looking to try to incorporate into during, um, later on down the road, it's not too long, we do some daycare, bringing a groomer. We have a lot of space, I'm sure you received the map. We're being able to use for the business. We're just trying to grow. And then when we were last, we weren't able to grow. And then, and we hope that we use our property. So we're trying to get it out of our property. Start back to ourselves.
Okay, so there's some basement level and some street level?
Yes, it's in the basement. We'll have our own private end, and we don't have to talk to everyone.
So, right now, it would just be the training and that's it? Like, you do some training there, like groups or something, and then individuals?
We do group classes and privates, one-on-ones. We're looking to hopefully be okay to daycare if we can build up to that point. We're not there yet, but maybe, you know, later on this year for you guys, who's always been asked for it.
Mm-hmm.
But we can provide it.
Do you have any outdoor space there that you can use?
There is a walking trail in the back that we can use for, we call it path walks, or walking lessons. We can use that.
I'm just wondering, like, with the daycare, if they would be inside all the time, or they would be...
They'd be inside, but then we'd use the walking trails to get them outside, too. Or we could take a field trip to, you know, a park that's allowed.
Okay.
And how many dogs? How many dogs?
We're able to run a couple classes at a time because of size. So, eight to 10 per class. Probably won't be eight to 10 right off the bat. I like six to be able to say. Again, we need to build up in plainbough.
Mm-hmm.
We've built up in, you know, but we've built up in north of that road, so we'll build up in plainbough.
No boarding, though?
No boarding.
No boarding.
Don't wanna get involved in that.
Then we also do CPR classes with a gentleman out of New York. He's been an EMT for 30 years or what have you. So he comes and trains people how to handle dogs in case of, uh, uh, suicidal, acidification or choking or what have you. So, um, what we did, well, we've done it before, but we did it at CCom Fun Club. He basically handles everything, we just provide his space. And, um, just promote it on the website and what have you.
So definitely advanced.
Yeah?
Um, so, there's another facility that's more boarding, daytime daycare, um, up on Route 1.
Oh, with dogs?
And, yeah, I was leaving, yeah. But, um, so, but you can hear the dogs there when they're outside. There's a lot, and there's a lot of noise. So I'm curious how yours would be relative to that for the purposes of, like, the neighbors on Bacon Square, 'cause you're gonna be on the West Bacon side.
Right.
So that's gonna be exposed to the neighbors, like, on Bacon Square.
Well, there's no window. We wouldn't be opening any windows, because they're just basement level, there's no need for it. And in the basement, it'll contain most of the noise.
Mostly, but I'm saying, the reason I ask is, like, you know, intention of trying to expand to some other, like, outdoor events or things like that.
We're not now.
No, they're not on the west.
The only time they would go out is to, uh, the...
Oh, unless they're, right?
People would have bags for that.
Yeah, but I think that's on the west side, square side. I think it's the other side.
This is on the front side.
The front side, which Bacon Square's right there.
Right, but I mean, it's across the street, and there's a business right on the corner. They're not really near any houses.
Well, the first house is only 150 feet away.
Yeah.
Alright, yeah.
So...
Generally, what happens, um, when we have, most of our, what we do is training, and we go out into a lot of stores, like, uh, L.O.B., Bath &amp; Pro Shops, Metal Outlets, uh, we bring our clients, folks, uh, clients also comes. But if a dog is barking, um, we give them basically a warning. Uh, they need to, like, handle the situation, walk away, try to reset the dog. And if they come back, then we ask them to leave, because we just can't have that. Um, A, it's bad for our name, we're not gonna, um, have that. Uh, so the parents need to work on the barking if they wanna take classes with us. You don't have it all out, um, as you would a daycare where they just bark and all that.
On one.
It becomes a nuisance. Um, we're not, that's not how we handle things, but, um...
Actually, recently, we had a class.
Brad Michaels.
They were reacting very badly.
Very vocal.
Um, no, they're vocal and they're reactive to three other dogs at the class, and I was like, no, gotta go home.
Thank you for the explanation, appreciate it.
Anybody else?
Where is your facility in North Alabot?
We were actually in the Grace of the Bible Church. In their basement.
In their basement?
Yeah, we were renting out it by hour.
Wow, okay.
But, um, we chose to grow, so we chose to, um, met Rich, and he talked to us about this place, and so we chose to leave the church and hope to be able to take in his own essence.
And there's only one entrance to this place, correct?
Uh, there's two.
There would be two, but we only got a, we only need to use this one.
Well, there's one over, there's one down here.
Yeah.
That goes out to the back.
Case of emergency?
Coming the side, yeah.
There is one there.
Yep.
That one goes to the walking trails.
Well, we'd have to catch them out.
There's gonna be a new petition where that line is there, I guess.
In the room?
Yeah.
It's a soft wall that, uh, I believe it's a fence, and all it's gonna do is bring it to the corner of, of that wall, so it kinda straightens the room out a little bit.
He's gonna put a fence, and he said he'll put up a curtain, so it gives us the privacy if someone opens the other side.
If I could, the, uh, I met with the, uh, Rich Bruno, who manages the building. Uh, this is a, a tenancy at will, uh, because they're, you know, they're concerned because they've other tenants in the building. So, there is that kinda check and balance, that if there's a problem within the building, that would, you know, first bother other tenants in there, and then, uh, you know, there'd have to be some type of adjustment to the operation. Uh, he was quite clear that this is kind of a trial basis, assuming that there are no issues going forward.
And you're aware of that, correct?
Yes, yes.
Basically, what kinda dogs go to this class? All breeds?
I'm sorry?
All breeds?
All breeds.
So you can have pit bulls, you can have Akedes?
Yes.
We, we own a pit bull, we own a Great Dane, um, we train them regularly.
We also train therapy dogs. And service dogs. We have a group of therapy dogs that actually go on different places. We've actually visited the higher physician here a few times, and we go to the benchmark groups, one in North Adra, Mansfield, um, Wolf Bull as well.
With what dog, what kinda dogs? The Labs?
We have Golden Retrievers, we have a Bernese Mountain Dog, we have two pit bulls in training to do their classes, they're in class right now, and...
Uh, Golden Doodles.
Golden Doodles.
Golden Doodles, yeah.
Any well-behaved dog can be a therapy dog.
And more, and just for the, uh, your knowledge, um, the dogs that seem to be more reactive, we do one-on-one at their homes generally. We don't, we don't bring them into wherever we are, we deal with that at their home.
But if we did bring them into the facility, they would be the only dog in there at the time, unless we need to work on aggression with another dog. And then that would be, we give ample space, 'cause we don't want any incidents.
And how many teachers do you have?
We have four right now. Five coming on soon, and possibly a six later on down the road this year. We're also a teaching, we also mentor for this, one of the schools that I graduated from. So, we get in students, and then we keep them on board if they, if they work out.
And then she's also on board to direct us for our therapy group, uh, Erotic Pennsylvania. They support, they ensure the dogs, very strict guidelines, um, so that's how we adhere. We don't, we don't, not loose.
No, it's Therapy Dogs United, if you...
Alright, anybody else?
One question, almost two. I hate to even ask it, because you guys are obviously professionals, right? What you do. When, that walking trail out there, obviously, it's used by people all the time and such. And obviously, you guys are very professional about taking care of the dog situations, if they have, all that. Um, and what, I always ask this, it's almost like an interview question. What's, what's the biggest downside of this type of business? I mean, what would someone complain about?
Clients or do people?
People in general around, around, the clients between you and them. People around the place is what we have to look out for.
People that don't like dogs?
Yeah.
Okay.
Generally, everywhere we go, people come up to us, and we also tell people, they'll be like, "Oh, look at the dog," and we're like, "You're more than happy to pet the dog," and they come right up to them.
And, in that, in that, in that note, or that theme, do you wanna, like, have a little open house to the neighbors and maybe advertise a little bit?
Oh, yes.
And have people come in and say, "This is what we do, if you got, if you got issues, just ask your questions," and...
We were even talking about, uh, providing a discount for the people in the building, so they can get to know us.
Yeah, that'd probably be helpful, 'cause if you've got people who don't like dogs, you might as well just address it straight up, right?
Right, right.
Yes.
Okay.
Very rarely do we come up to that. There, right, there have been a couple, um, and it's kind of, you know, like, she had brought up a point one time, what, what are some restaurants that we can bring a dog to, and somebody just happened, we came on and was like, "I don't even want your dog in the restaurant."
Right.
Okay, I don't know. But we didn't say anything, all the other people did.
And I just wanna go back to, um, you had asked the question about board and training. If we do any board and training, it will be either our house. Don't be in the facility. So, I'm sure I'd have to get even another check from that, and then I'd have, we'd have to hire somebody to be there with them, because we're not gonna have the dogs in the building, you know, unsupervised or, or something happen.
Just so you know, we do have liability insurance for, um, anything that may come up.
Yeah, if they bite somebody or something.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, generally, it's gonna be us, because we're doing the training, but luckily, I haven't been, so...
No, it sounds, um, like a non-invasive way of bringing dogs into our neighborhood.
No, I think dog training is a good thing.
So I've done this for my dog a bit, who's a bit of a problem, and, um, the issues I, just questions, when you come in, if there's one group being trained and another group waiting, there tends to be some barking there between the two groups, and then when they go out, same thing. How do you, how do you handle the dogs coming in and the dogs going out? Because that's, that's when you, I think you get a, in my opinion, that's when you tend to get, the dogs that are in there, training, tend to be well behaved, because you're giving them 100% attention. When the dogs walk in with their owners, nobody's looking at them, and when there's the overlap, that's when you get the barking and the yapping and the potential for problems. Do you have, do you have staging areas, or what do you...
So, as, as far as the, uh, the floor plan, what we were talking about, it's basically soft walls, that you can kinda maneuver to, to make it right.
Four feet high, or?
Yeah.
Like that, okay.
Yes, uh, we're actually looking at one now, where it's, uh, basically fence panels that are on wheels, and you just maneuver them, um, so there would be...
I can show you.
Three or four different areas that you could break up, and then...
So when they walk in, is there like a staging area for the dogs that are coming in while the other dogs are training?
Yeah, we won't have the dogs passing each other in your way.
Because that's the only place I've ever seen.
Safety wise, that's not right.
There'd be a, a sort of a chance for conflict, just on that transition.
Absolutely. Which we'd never really, um, I don't know if it's because our dogs see each other all the time.
Yeah.
And they kinda just get used to it, but generally, you, you don't really have issues, but I mean, when you're having more dogs in a facility like this, yes, you're gonna have to have, uh, an area that's kinda, a staging area as well. Uh, which, again, we talked about soft walls or curtains that you can, you know, just kinda block things out.
Yeah, I bet you, one of them had soft walls, and one of them had a separate room, they just, you just wait in a separate room, and then you come out.
Yeah.
You just didn't know, so you got, you...
We've dealt with a lot of dogs, whether it be a dog that has no issues, or a dog that has a lot of issues. We've, we're very good about picking up on all the signals. I've, you know, taken a lot of schooling to make sure of this, and well-intended on it. Um, we will definitely make sure that they're not, like, passing by each other like that to make it uncomfortable, and we'll make it a rule as well.
Even, even our, like, my nieces and nephews, they like to help. So, if there's a dog that we're questioning, if you will, um, we, we put in a lot of strict things that, we tell them upfront, "You need to listen to me, you need to do this, um, and things will be fine," and that's how we handle it. We don't just allow a dog to go up to a person and be like, "Okay, we'll see what happens," you know? Um, we don't wanna, we don't wanna get either one of them in that position, whether it's the dog or a child. So, we're advocates for the dogs all day long, um, but yet we keep the people, you know, safe also. This is how we, because we run our, uh, run our, our business, if you will. Okay?
Sounds good. So, anybody else have anything? Are we good?
Just, um, some housekeeping. Oh, I'm sorry. You have someone in the audience?
I know.
I have nothing. Do you have water for us? Is 23 West Bacon, I think, that that's my daughter's dance studio? Is it the Turquoise Building?
Yep.
Yeah.
So, can you just tell me where that entrance is?
I'm sorry.
And where you can link those front windows up? There's a lot of kids who run back and forth. It's on the other side.
It's on the right hand.
Parking lot side.
On the right-hand side of the building.
The main parking lot side.
Because I was just gonna...
You'll be on the, they're on opposite ends, relative to West Bacon.
I was trying to figure that out.
Yeah.
Basically, it's, it's a lot of the front building is what it ends up in.
And where the orange is, is here. Alright, I was just curious.
It's the front glass double doors in, in, with the parking lot.
Yeah.
It go down?
Goes in.
And then it has the doors to the left.
Around that corner.
It's where the, um, award guy used to be.
Yeah, it's in that facility, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's when you used to go down the stairs and take a lap, and you go into the award guy, and now they're, I don't know where they are now. Forget it. They moved, but that's where he used to be. Okay.
I was about to say, there's a, a little, uh, business that needs to be attended to. The, the permit fee for special permits, $2,500, and I frankly couldn't see charging that, but I obviously have no authority to waive or reduce it, so I have not charged her anything for this special perm, other than that she's paid for the advertising and the notice to a butters, but there has to be some type of flexibility with some of these special permits. I mean, this is, there's no...
I talked to, I talked to, um, Joe about that. The last kennel, we, uh, we brought it down to 250, and there's a couple others where there's no construction involved, and it's just a straight reveal, we went to 250, which is basically like the, you know, a little more than the Form A plan or something.
Yeah, I'd be fine with that. Anybody else?
We've got the boards out at numerous times, which is reasonable.
Would you say 250?
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
200. Okay.
Thank you.
So, we'll make a motion to reduce the fee.
Joe can just put it in the decision.
You can just do that? Okay, that's good. Alright, works for me.
Okay.
Alright, so...
I'll then close the hearing and vote.
You guys all set with this? Can we close the hearing, so we can move on? Um...
I'm sorry?
Any restrictions? Anybody have any restrictions? What do you have, business hours?
Um, right now, we do evenings and weekends, but we're hoping to start with doing, like, hoping to build up to doing day hours. So the earliest, eight or nine o'clock in the morning.
Mm-hmm.
We'll be out by nine. I don't wanna be in there by 10:00. I don't think you wanna be there until 10:00.
The last class ends at nine.
Last class would end at, like, 8:30.
8:30.
To be out by nine.
That seems reasonable for people that work.
Unfortunately, we're at the mercy of the people that train.
We have our own dogs, too, so...
Yeah. Okay, that seems fine. Anyone else have anything? Are we good? Motion to close?
How many, how many days a week, though?
She said, weekends and days, so...
Seven days, seven days.
Seven days?
Seven days.
Building's open seven days a week for everything else, right?
It is.
Whereas I know he...
Everything's open there.
The Gens is, uh, I think a fitness center.
Yeah, so it's strictly restricted, if nothing else is...
Yeah, he didn't, Rich should not say that they weren't, the building wasn't open on certain days.
I don't see anything out of that.
I'd like to make a motion to, um, to close the hearing.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then, I guess, we'll approve the special permit with...
Yep.
Contingent on the draft conditions.
Yep, I make a motion that we approve this special permits with the draft condition, draft conditions included, obviously.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thanks. Yeah, I, I was in track of days. If you wanna, uh, see Lisa up on the, the office that we met, she can take care of that, and we'll get this signed.
Just so you're clear, there's a 21-day appeal period after, from when Joe files with the clerk. Once that appeal period's up, you have to go to the clerk, pick up the original decision. That gets recorded in the registered deeds in, uh, North, in Dedham.
North Fork Registry.
If Joe, a copy of that, back here again. You can file for any building permits or anything you need in the interim, but you won't get a permit until the appeal period's up, and you have the decision recorded in the registered deeds. So it's just, that's state law, so there's nothing the town can do to...
But we can't go to the Adra Registration Registry?
No, that's Crystal County.
Yeah, it's a different county.
We're in plainbough.
So that's, that's the state law, so, but you just have to follow it, and, and, nothing we can do to change that.
She, she can proceed at her own risk, I mean, she's...
She can proceed at her own risk, but you gotta, um, yes, you can.
I mean, it's not like she's gonna invest in, in the building, so...
Well, I'm saying, there's still steps you have to do. You have to pick up the decision, you have to record it, you have to, there's a 21-day appeal period, so...
But that, remember, to do that...
Right, and then she's gotta, she's gotta go through to Marshall and get a, she's gotta go to the building inspector and...
Yeah, he's, he's already on board, assuming the planning board has, uh, approved the special permit.
Alright, 'cause he'll, he'll look at the access and stuff like that, fire extinguishers and stuff like that.
Okay, that will, I'll get to that in a little bit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Alright.
Um, the other quick item, hopefully, is Craig from RLS.
Yeah, Red Rock.
DNR.
Um, let me just bring it up on the screen, and I think I put it in your packet as well.
Just for today. Craig Siganowski, Rim Engineering. Two lots involved are, uh, 25 Collie Street and five Red Rock Lane. We're a part of Hawthorne Brooklyn Estates, which is a four-lot or three-lot subdivision, and unfortunately, when we saved the wheat field for house number five, lot three, Red Rock, they got placed too close to the property line, actually four feet over the property line. In order to make it conform to the zoning, I mean, according to health regulations, we need to be 10 feet from the property line. So we've adjusted the lot line in order to accomplish that. We're not changing frontage, minimum lot area in this, these two lots is 80,000, the one lot's at 100, uh, 234,000, the other's 110,000. And we're taking 690 square feet out of, uh, it's called 17A presently.
That's Jean's lot, right?
Jean Minard's property, and then Daniel Cartero's five Red Rock.
I'm not, I think I'm good.
New lot area here is 80,000, both lots are well over 100,000. We're moving 690 square feet in order to make the septic system conform.
Alright. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Nope.
Nope.
Are we good? So, someone wanna make a motion to endorse the plan?
I make a motion we endorse this plan, Red Rock and Collie Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thanks.
Your signatures.
Just give you the special...
I didn't ask him. Chris, you have a special pen for these things? I have to grab it.
It's in New Hampshire.
Oh, okay.
I wonder why.
I think that's for respect.
I was like, maybe he took it.
Don, would you have a special pen?
He said it was his.
It probably was his. I wish he used to have one.
Joe, you mentioned that copies, do you need...
I've been running through, uh, cop here, 'cause I've gotta give copies to the services. Yes, I'll take care of that.
Okay.
And then, uh, someone will give you a call, you know, probably, uh, tomorrow or this Monday, that it's ready for you. Thank you, Greg.
Sorry, how much time do you have left? Nick's not here, so we're not gonna be doing that. Right, 'cause no one's here for Seventeen High Street, right? Nick's not here?
Uh, no, I just have the, I sent the, um, the decision to him. I haven't heard back in terms of the conditions. Well, no news is good news. Um, it's your decision.
I mean, what do you guys want to do? Do you want to prove it, or do you want, so they're here?
What were, what were the things you wanted?
Don't you relapse a meeting? Let me have it. Oh, he did tell me to.
Joe, have you read that to see if it's verbatim like it was, other than the few things that we had in there?
That, like, prepared it, so, and there are hours of operation, there was the, you know, reference to.
Okay, so it's not typed, it's not written by them, it's written by.
Oh, no, no, no.
No, he writes it.
Correct.
Okay. He writes what we want.
Oh, good.
And then he said to them and asked them, and they didn't respond, so we're gonna assume that they are okay, won't they?
Came from none of them.
Yeah, no, no, yeah. No, it looks like, I mean, the hours in there, all that stuff.
Thank you.
Oh, good one. You okay with it?
Yeah. Yeah. I think it's a, a, a really nice, a, a nice place. If, if anyone around here has looked at, um, storage facilities, they're practically the most passive, best tax slash money situation a town can have. Um, they're quiet, they're generally very, no issues, and, um, you know, for something being real close to some residential houses, it's, it's about as good as you should be looking for.
I rented one for a while and no one was ever there. I was there a lot. I'm like, where are the people that were ever here?
They put their stuff in and just pay the rent, usually, I don't know, so.
All right, so I guess we have to close, we have to close.
Well, the hearing's closed. It's simply a matter of.
It was closed, right? Just.
Signing the, you know, agreeing to and signing the.
Okay.
Give action.
Okay, so.
And make the motion that we, um, approve.
The certificate of action for special permits. Now, would you want our motion to be?
Yes.
Okay. I have a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If you would just sign the. I'm gonna change will be the, uh, remove the highlight.
Change Justin as here. It was checked off on there as a absentee.
He wasn't here for the last session.
I think it's on the previous meeting.
Yeah.
Oh.
Thought it was on this. All right.
Thanks.
I did see what you're talking about. Check mark. Oh, yeah.
Can we have it taped back? All right. All right.
Thank you.
So I guess our next one is next grid. Come on up.
You're the next contestant.
Yeah.
And I will, I will be quietly leaving at six forty to go to my daughter's Jasmine concert, so please don't mind my quiet exit.
We'll see how quiet.
I'm gonna try to just, right now, not interrupt.
Actually recognize Jasmine.
They are good.
All right, so I guess, uh, the people want an update.
I'll start by saying that Graves Engineering had submitted the letter to the planning board in the past Friday, so I'm sure people will speak to that, but since the April, was it April seventeenth was the last planning board that Jack Ackman and Melinda attended, uh, in my absence, uh, we submitted a revised site plan modification on April eighteenth, the next day. And then as far, and obviously Jeff and Graves had to review that, and, uh, that part is just complete until we discuss it tonight. As far as onsite work, um, on April twenty-sixth, the repairs started with the, um, the civil contractor onsite, our subcontractor. Uh, once the conditions improved to get within the field, they mobilized heavy equipment. And, uh, again, none of this has to do with the site plan modifications presented that we're discussing tonight. This is all just the stormwater pollution prevention plan and the, uh, you know, some of the items on Graves' report, uh, initially that came in January or February. Your first.
March first is our first, uh, for the record, man of change, Jeff Walsh, Graves Engineering.
Thank you.
For the record, Adam Christie, Graves Engineering, and Melinda.
Melinda Stella, Weston and Hampton.
Uh, so it was Graves' report that had some repairs. There was the, um, erosion sedation control aerial that we had shared and updated multiple times from, you know, February and March. And so we've also been performing inspections with the hall of Weston and Hampton from a civil engineering stormwater sense. And also our other consultant, Todd King, who's a associate, so he does our stormwater pollution prevention, stabilization, of course, all of that. So with that, the repairs started on April twenty-sixth, and as of May thirteenth, which was about two and a half weeks later, all of, uh, the rills within the array were repaired, seeded and matted. Um, all silt has been removed as of mid-May from basin one B, which is the larger basin to the southwest. And then on the next day, May fourteenth, uh, the contractor started work on the slope interrupters throughout the entire site, which is the lines you see running north-south, and in the back, there's one going around the, uh, the high curve. And so those have been ongoing for the past two weeks, and those will be completely finished per the original design of the slope interrupters. Uh, those will be done by the end of next week. And, um, I think all that remains is a few just upgrading of basin one B.
Did you have a, you didn't say that right?
So there's a few in that lower left quadrant of the site plan you're looking at that remain. So those will be done over the next two weeks. That's where the, right now, there's a, like a twelve-inch compost filter sock in its place, which is what's been utilized the last couple of months. So there's some new ones in there, and then, per the original plan, they're being backfilled with, um, topsoil and, you know, fill and topsoil, matted and, uh, shaped to provide that twenty-four inch depth on the upgraded stuff. For the rest of the concrete, so those will be done by the end of next week, and then barring the go-ahead after Graves' review letter that came in on Friday, all of that site plan modification work will take approximately four weeks to complete. It's, it's actually less than four weeks, but there's still a little bit of sediment and handwork that has to be done under the arrays in the two smaller bases, one A, two B, and that one three? Yeah, so in basin three. So over the next three to four weeks, we'll be completing that work pending your formal approval here tonight. I know you said it's initially approved upon Graves' review letter, but that work will officially, we want it to hold off. And so that's where we are right now, um, other than stating that for the benefit of your brothers, um, our insurance company, that's been working with a local specialist to put out, uh, you know, liability investigation, and they used another consultant to meet with all of the homeowners, uh, share photos, share, receive all of that process, so I believe we'll be getting notice tomorrow from like insurance, attorney, expert. So like, four or five different people involved in the line, so we're getting like final reports tomorrow. I believe there was a couple outstanding documents pending from one or two neighbors that may have came in last week. We're waiting for a final report. So once that comes in, we're, you know, I don't know what's next in the process, other than they're gonna give us an update, uh, possibly tomorrow, we're trying to get it in, if we can get that filed over, so that's where we are with that part of the, uh, question.
Okay, um, so what's going on with the basin that's on the Y property?
So that was a temporary measure to slow the water down until we received more robust, uh, you know, stabilization up top. That's gonna be removed, uh, once we hit substantial, um, stabilization.
Okay.
It's not included in the site plan, as you'll see up there.
Yeah.
It's, well, it's shown as contours, but there's a note that says to be removed at the conclusion.
'Cause, um, I did get a copy of the email today from Bob.
Yeah, I saw that.
Did you see that? I was just gonna give you a copy.
No, I have it. I'm, yeah, I'm copying on it. We were still trying to, we thought we were making progress on potentially leaving it. It's gonna be an improvement, but with some of the designs that are on this plan here that Melinda provided, it, um, you know, replaces that. Like, it would've been an added measure, but we've moved forward with the design with the, the need for that, so you know, under our disease permit and all of our stormwater permits, like, we're allowed to do temporary measures.
Mm-hmm.
And so, um, I know YMCA had different opinions of that, but it's gonna be removed and not incorporated to the finals.
Okay.
Well, the question is, given its functionality or lack thereof, what's going to replace it? Or is it needed?
So there's a, um, right next to two B, it's probably hard to see, but I know I'm pointing with the. But to the left of two B, uh, it's hard to see, but there's going to be a riprap level spreader there, so rather than the discharge coming out of that basin, which the original design was to go into the wooded portions by the YMCA, go to the west and then cross the driveway, that now, rather than just coming out at one point, is going to come out and then spread over the length of that basin and then basically overtop naturally like we're doing, uh, at one B. So by doing that, we're slowing the runoff down there, um, in addition to all of the slope interruptors and everything there, so she, uh, Melinda, if you want to speak on the calculations for the need or the fact that we could remove it.
Yeah, sure. Uh, so like Adam mentioned, uh, we revised the discharges for basin two A and two B, um, to have them go into level spreaders instead of being a point discharge. And then we also, uh, on the side of, um, the south side, sorry, um, can you, where?
I'm sorry?
Uh, can you just scroll up?
Scroll up?
Yeah, okay, so on the south side of the access road, um, below, uh, the sediment four bay for one A, um, there's a, uh, a swell proposed there to catch any additional runoff that is, um, coming from the site that's not going to be collected in a stormwater basin. It's gonna go into that swell, and then there's a large, um, riprap level spreader, um, right outside of the, the gate. Well, it starts inside the gate and then continues outside the gate on the property. And that is going to be used in place of, or even be redirected further downstream at the, where that, um, temporary basin is right now.
So it won't be redirected north like it was doing?
Yeah. All right, yeah, she does. On those basins, has there been a groundwater amounting analysis done on all the basins or not?
We haven't had a mounting analysis, no.
If there was a mounting analysis, would we prove that those basins maybe not be, would not be capable of handling the water?
Um, a mounting analysis on them would just show, it, it, it's used to show groundwater in proximity to the basin, and it's used to evaluate drainage time. So to alleviate that, what we did was we put the low-flow drains in at the bottom of the basin, and those are the perforated pipes that run lengthwise parallel with the invagments. And then they have tighter pipes running out of those to discharge water, so no water is sitting inside the basin and they drain before the next storm comes.
Should we have done, or should you guys have done that groundwater analysis in the beginning to see what we needed for sizes of the basins?
Um, I believe no, it wouldn't be required, um, for the stormwater checklist, um, but.
No, they didn't do the original design, remember?
Yeah, I know.
Somebody else, and they, those original design probably did have groundwater mounting analysis, and Jeff confirmed that's required under stormwater.
Yeah.
Again, for the record, Jeff Walsh, Graves Engineering, um, the original designer, um, I didn't bring their documents with us, but I don't remember conclusively, but I'm pretty sure there was a ground mounting, groundwater mounting analysis in that original application, where there's a new engineer on board modifying a set of plans and the hydrology calculations. It wouldn't be unusual for them not to go back to the, a lot of the peripheral things such as groundwater mounting analysis.
All right. I just wondered if that's where it was, you know, we missed the boat, that's all.
I don't believe so.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so are we just basically giving them a blessing to go forward?
I mean, you've already frankly done that. Uh, this is an update in terms of, uh, what they've both discovered and modified to date.
Does anyone in, in the audience have anything they'd like to add, ask?
Patty. Hi, Patty Walsh, my parents own, uh, Four Mile South Street. Um, question, you said you're gonna remove that temporary basin that's to the north, um, kind of the access for sediment four bay one. When is that going to come out? Because I know when it rains, other than it drizzled, that fills. And that's the tw- uh, two times that it had filled up, both times it broke through the wall of that basin. And the amount of water that went into that basin and filled that basin. So there's nothing now that's gonna catch any of that water. It's just gonna be the level spreader now under two B. So where does that water go?
Yeah, so all, all of the water is gonna continue in the same flow path. Um, the, the difference between what it has been to now is that as the site continues to stabilize and more grass coverage is on site, the smaller storms, there will be less water discharged from the site, um, just because of the security charge of a lot of water and the, the grass and the infiltration of the grass overseas. Um, the water, all of that water is still going to that area. It's just now, instead of pooling and ponding in one basin at one time with a small discharge point, is it will just continue to flow off-site continuously over time, instead of at one distinct time.
And one thing else to note is that originally, when you were seeing that Patty, when, uh, basically the two notches formed, was water was basically funneling in one point source discharge. There was a swell that kinda, just outside of our tree line on the Y property, that runs around from the parking lot, and there was a large tree that had fallen, and so basically the discharge from two B was not making it into the wooded area, and it was going along the driveway. So that was coming down into where the beginning of the ditch was, that's beyond the, um, cell fence. So you were getting that water, plus you were getting the water that was sort of rerouting, um, from the ditch on the Y property, plus you were getting the point source from us, so it was basically the two convergences of water hitting at different points, whereas one was going to the, you know, the southern part of that temporary basin, and the other one was going right where you were seeing that notch being formed. So with the level spreader now, instead of it being one area, it's going to spread evenly across that whole like hundred fifty, two hundred fifty feet, I don't know, based on the scale. But, so it's, it's not gonna be coming any more than one linear path. It's gonna be spread out in addition to the reduction in volume because of the slope interrupters, the vegetation, uh, the additional, uh, rerouting. What is along that? The, the driveway on the north side, the trees, is that a berm?
A diversion berm.
Yeah, so that berm is going to force the water to hit the new level spreader in the corner, which is going to slow down the water that is now much less in volume because of where the flow paths are. Um, I apologize for being visualized with my hands and not having a red pointer, but, um, I can show you on the plan afterwards in the hallway if you'd like. It's kinda hard to.
Yeah.
Show it, but we're, you know, our slip inspectors are already seeing a reduction in the amount of water in certain areas because of vegetation up there. And I guess to answer the original question is, when is it gonna be removed? If it's, if it is continuing to be a problem, which I haven't seen it based on the previous reports and after rain events, we can start to knock that down so it's not holding as much, and you can't breach or redirect, and, I mean, this was just a temporary measure due to, you know, high intensity storms and a whole bunch of various items that occurred that caused it to hit that one point, so we can reevaluate over the next couple of weeks, and if we're seeing after some rain events, I believe we had like a two-inch total rain event over a two-day period recently, and, um, I didn't see any evidence that that had overtoped. But, yeah, I'm just looking forward, so Patty, you do that?
Yeah, I'm just concerned, 'cause again, it's hard to point up there, um, the where, the south side of basin two B, and then you have that access road that goes from left to right on that drawing. There's a lot of water that comes down that road that, when it hit the gate on the far left, it was going into that basin. That water, there's no way that all of that water is gonna go over to four bay one or basin one A. It's too far north of that slope.
So in addition to, um, the basic modifications that we made, um, as part of the new plan set that's shown on the screen, there's additional water bars. Originally, I believe they were spaced every two hundred feet, and we knocked that down to every one hundred feet. And those are the diagonal lines that, um, run perpendicular to the access road, so they're running at an angle north-south. And that will be used to any heat flow that, or water running along the access road. It will push it down to the south of the access road to go into that sediment four bay four basin, uh, water. four basin water. And then the water, the water past that last water bar, along the access road, all of that water will be channelized within the swell line and go to that large river level spreader at the base of the road, right? Kind of covering the inside of the gate and outside of the gate in that, that river area there. So a water bar is essentially a big speed bump, just a big gravel speed bump that's going to be installed perpendicular to the travelway of the road. And when water hits that, it will go down to the down gradient side of the road into the grass area within the southern, southern array and all of that subcatchment does go into the sediment four bay or one A.
So with, I'm sorry, with all of this, so you're going to tell me when that basin, two B, when the water comes out of that, overflows whatever into that level spreader?
So, so the water from basin two B will not go into the four bay for one A. The water from basin two B, the design modification there is that there, we still have the low flow drain within the basin, but instead of it discharged into the ground surface, that pipe is now designed to go, be installed in the level spreader, like in stone. So that discharge will go into that stone, fill up in that stone over a longer distance parallel to the berm and then spill over in a sheet flow pattern down into the wood line of the Y M C A.
Right, so what I'm saying is.
So it's not going to be channelized.
So after basin two B.
Yeah.
Other than rocks being on the slope, there's nothing to prevent any of that water to continue straight down. That temporary basin is not going to be there, so it's basically going to go straight down into my father's backyard.
Yes, and again, all, water, water is going to continue to go to the west. There's, there's no design.
Correct.
That we've done.
Correct.
To change the direction of discharge. What we've done is promoted more sheet flow and less channelized flow. So instead of a point discharge within that, that outlet pipe, and those only one inch, we have buried that within gravel so that it fills up within gravel trench over a longer distance so that will fill up evenly. And then as it gets to ground surface, it will sheet flow over down into the wood line of the Y M C A.
Okay.
So it won't be one, it won't be like one channel line that you're trying to go down.
Right, so still when it comes down through the wood line, when it gets to the other side of the wood line, where is that water going?
It's still wanting to go down that slope.
Right, but it's, it's going to keep going down. But from that basin two B, if you keep going west, you're going to hit my father's house.
Yes.
And so is the water.
Yes.
And if it doesn't go down to his backyard, it's going to go into the easement, which is going to go into the town drains, which I believe you guys didn't want their water coming off their property going into the town system. So that's the only way water's going to flow, according to that picture, from right to left. And now with that basin being removed, the only thing stopping that collection of water is going to be that level spreader. And once it goes over the level spreader, it's a free for all. Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Mike, do I have a quick question? I think, I remember this correctly, that we were told that all the water would not leave the site and would be absorbed into the ground. No, no, never?
That was said sometime, it was said.
Yeah, I think it was.
No, the state requirements are that we can't increase.
Increase.
The amount of volume or rate in which it leaves the site. So what Melinda's trying to explain is that, you know, sheet flow versus point source discharge is your rate is going to be reduced and your volume of water, which the calculations show is reduced from the original conditions, the original V H P design. So the water, the volume of water is always going to make its way to South Street. It's just based on the rate in which it gets there. So it's not, you know, four inches of water in a twenty minute period, it's four inches of water, you know, potentially if it's a large storm, over, you know, it, it's like time of concentration, right? So like from your high point to your low point, that's the time it takes to travel a drop of water. So right now due to construction and every, you know, the original design, the water's getting there faster. And that's where you're seeing the water accumulate more. Now with all of these vegetation, slope interrupters, the level spreaders, the design of this is yes, we have to meet the volume requirements, we're also meeting the rate. So all of these additional improvements are to slow down the water and give it time to, you know, recharge into the soil, but it's, unless this site was a bowl, the water does not stand, so. So the design is to reduce the amount from pre-development conditions.
Okay, and you said that, that one inch pipe under the gravel?
Well, it's a, it's not a one inch pipe, it's a one inch orifice. So like a drill hole coming out of it, so like, like you go up to the site right now and look at the pipes, there's a pipe, pipe, pipe down on the side.
Six inch.
It's a, it's a pipe.
Oh, okay.
And then there's a cap on it.
A cap line.
Drill hole in it.
Yeah.
Because as I was saying, in the wintertime, one inch, it's just going to freeze, you know, so.
No, the pipes are marked as that.
Yeah.
So you've, you've seen this email from the Y?
Yes, I was on it.
So I wasn't getting involved in this discussion, but, so I, I think, and I listened to the lady in the back here, she's concerned about the water going down. And you're, you're going to take out, as I understand it, that, that flow down the South Street through the channelized ditch because it's on the Y property? Is that what you're saying?
No, there's, there was a.
You're pointing and I can't see what you're pointing to.
Sorry, so on the left side of the driveway where the driveway goes up to the north, on the left-hand side, there is.
Soil there, ditch.
Uh, just a little, a little bit north of that.
Give this to Chris.
Is that going to stay?
No.
So.
That was a temporary measure, that's.
So that, that was shown on the original plan, so where the Y says you don't have an easement, I think you may have rights to that because the, 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 the decision that gave the Y the property was part of the special permit decision to show the drainage going through there. So, so their, their assessment here.
Could be wrong.
Not an attorney, but that could be correct. And as the woman in the back said, if you can get some of that water to go down the way it was going, so it's not going down in the backyards, down to that catch basin where you put the, the header in, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily take this at face value. I think you have some rights perhaps.
No, so.
But I'm not an attorney, I got one sitting here, so I got to be careful what they say.
No, so, you know, I'm familiar with, you know, all, all the permits on here for, you know, the NIPD's permit, the stormwater permit, especially Massachusetts and, you know, the permit applies to the property and we're allowed to do temporary B M Ps, so within our limit of disturbance, we can do any temporary.
And you're allowed, I think you're allowed to do a permanent.
We are.
That's shown, that's shown on the original plan with other things, because it's part, it's part of that special permit where, where they got.
That's what we're trying to work through.
So, so I, I just don't think that's necessarily completely correct.
So for the time being, obviously, is, there is a note saying to remove it and we have run the calculations and made changes so that if we couldn't overcome this discussion with the Y M C A, then we know that the calculations and what we put on the plans works versus, you know. So we're still trying to, I have seen that email and we're going to try to speak with them again. You know, turning it from temporary sedimentation basin at the time was meant for some volume storage and to slow it down. And the long-term benefit of that would be with the water coming over that stretch, essentially we've taken the one that's on the Y's property and moved it up the hill to two B. So we're slowing it down at the source versus at the end of the woods, so having that would be a benefit. It would be reduced to.
The overflow I think would help, and I think you, I believe, I'm not going to say, but you may have some rights that you might want to discuss that with Joe who's very knowledgeable in this stuff.
Yeah, I, I share the same sentiment. It's just, you know, it gets a little muddy, so.
Yeah, you just, it needs to be mediated there probably when you're having that discussion with the Y, so.
Could I?
We're still working through that.
As probably the most incompetent technical person in the room, I'll just offer this as a layman's observation. Going back to my earlier question, what happens to the functionality of that temporary basin when it goes away? I made a quick visit this afternoon and if memory serves me, there's, there's silt sock, which is relatively new, along here, of course, the, the detention basin, but there's also silt sock across the easement. And it follows the contour of the easement. And I was a little amazed, there's probably, it's hard to, two or three cubic feet of good sized sticks that's up against that, that silt sock. So the silt socks relatively new, so this little dam of, of good sized sticks, this wasn't just leaves and debris, to have, you know, amassed and flown down to that, down that easement tells me that something still isn't working, even, and, and what would make the situation worse is the absence of that temporary detention basin. Again, I'm not an engineer, I, I see sticks that don't belong there, that were clearly brought there by water, notwithstanding the presence of that detention basin. I'm concerned when that detention basin goes away. And to follow up on Chris's, I mean, I, I wasn't here for the original approval, but if in fact there's some anticip-, or there was some anticipation that either the easement was going to be used or some part of the, the property was going to be used beyond yours, I think that needs to be investigated. And what I didn't print out, I saw some emails back and forth in terms of legal documents in, in acquiring those easements that didn't, wasn't well received by the Y.
Yeah, I had worked to prepare those and put it in front of them to start the discussion and we thought, well, I, I wasn't there for the meeting, but let's just say we're continuing to work with them and potential work with the town and to review what you're speaking of as well. Because the benefit is, it's, it's meant to not contain but to slow. And right now, when that was larger, it was just, it wasn't engineered, right? It was just thrown in quickly, temporary measure into the town, had mentioned it in passing prior site visits, I wasn't there for that. And so it is a little bit deeper, holds more water and we know that when a larger volume of water releases, it's going to, to your point, let's say move sticks, right? Like the volume of water is going to come out and it's just going to clear a path. And so by reducing that to just a level spreader, it's slow, it's going to slow the water down over time versus one quick release if, if, you know, one of the berms were to a key notch, which in that case was just, you know, that was from heavy storms and point source discharge. So I, I agree that it would be a benefit and removing it completely, the goal is that what we're adding up top at two B is going to replace that and we've made contingencies with the berm along the driveway, redirecting it to another level spreader. Part of it is there's an existing ditch in the wood line beyond the limit of disturbance that has been there for, I don't know how long. So that's picking up a good amount of water and so that is something that the level spreader, you know, water's always going to get there potentially. We're trying to remove the amount of water going to that location, which the plan in front of you does do, but we would like to slow it down more and so we, we are going to continue those conversations.
Jeff, you had something?
Certainly.
Thank you. When I first started coming to these meetings during the winter, we're here obviously because of the, well, so much for that.
Ah, there we go.
We're here because of the drainage complaints and with respect to those, my biggest concern at that time was the condition of the site where the solar panels were put up. Quite frankly, the, what was on the ground was poor vegetative cover at that time. There was some seed, there was some vegetation established. I showed pictures of other projects, grass meadow and so on and so forth. And there was a lack of the permanent slope, slope interrupters. So a lot of bare ground that would generate a lot more runoff than the proposed conditions of vegetative cover. The applicant came back with plan modifications and to support those plan modifications, there's a set of hydrology calculations. We issued our first review letter back on March first with respect to the proposed site plan improvements or modifications, I should say, is that they were basically looking to try to store more volume in some of those stormwater basins. They had added the one on the Y, Y M C A property, sorry if I got that wrong. And quite frankly, my letter the first time through came back, I'm okay with the plan modifications, my exception to everything is the hydrology calculations to support that. There were a number of inconsistencies between pre and post as far as the modeling method, which I call it massaging the numbers. I don't, I'm not, I'm not trying to be, you know, disrespectful, but I just, I want to, when I review something, I want to make sure there's a consistent methodology between the pre-development and the post-development, so to the best of everyone's ability, we're comparing apples with apples. Now, I'll get back to that in just a moment. Under standard engineering practices, and the design team is obligated to look at, identify the flow paths to stormwater discharge points, pick stormwater analysis points and model the pre-development conditions. And then as a factor of their land development, propose mitigation measures, as we know, we typically see stormwater basins and so on, so forth, so that they do not, one, increase peak rates of runoff and two, under Mass D P stormwater standards, you're supposed to not make negative impacts to flooding. And flooding is, is what I've always perceived and, and what is a good example is a project I worked on years ago. Small pond, low lying land around it, large development, a lot of, even though the peak rates were attenuated or not increased, the volume of water coming to that little pond and the little outlet that it had is going to bring the water level up a lot. I'm talking close to a foot over low lying area. That's flooding, that's flooding. Conveyance and, and conveyance of water, that speaks more so to peak rates of runoff. So first of all, with respect to post-development conditions, they're not, they can't exceed pre-development peak rates of runoff, peak rates of runoff. And, and to that point, under the post-development conditions, they can't absorb all the water. I mean, it's just, it doesn't happen unless you're in a gravel site with pretty level topography, which as we know, this, that's not the case here. So the hydrology calculations were resubmitted and we received on April 23rd. And I had a couple of conversations with Melinda Costello as they were working through them. They addressed my concerns in the consistency of mathematical modeling of hydrology and I had, and they continue to keep the slope interrupters on the plan and they did continue to benefit from some increase in travel time, if you will, with the slope interrupters that was vetted out under the original application. So what I'm telling you is my letter of Friday, May 17th, I'm satisfied with the revisions to the hydrology calculations and I can tell this board that that set of hydrology reasonably represents the changes proposed here and reasonably and consistently looks at post-development rates versus pre-development rates and it does show no increases in peak rates and generally reductions in volume runoff. So that's what my letter here talks about. It was my first letter that basically said I have no, no issues with the modifications proposed on the plans. And lastly, I took the opportunity this afternoon to visit the site. Last, my last visit was right around December, maybe January. I was disappointed with the level of vegetative cover there. I'm happy to report to the board that there's been significant improvement in the grass growth, looks like it was reseeded, there's topsoil still piled up. It's a, it's a work in progress, don't get me wrong. But generally speaking throughout the site, it looks, except for at the stormwater basins with this upcoming work, as I could tell there was no modifications made yet, almost waist-high grass growth, which I was happy to see. The slope interrupters are being constructed, they're working from the northerly end to the southerly end. I believe there's that middle road that goes up and then hooks to the right and goes to the angled road. I believe that slope interrupter on that uphill side isn't there yet, but the two slope interrupters going down to stormwater basin two A are in. I believe that lowest one is there by basin two B. In, seeded, I believe they're seeded, and, and the erosion control matting over them. Down on the south end, it's a work in progress, there's places where they have, have, they've got at least the, the wattles in, but not the smoke interrupters, the, the fill and the matting and all that. There are places where even though the grass has grown up, to gain access coming down the hill from the middle road that goes up and down the sheet. the hill from the middle road that goes up and down the sheet. Um, the track machine and the small rubber tie machines are walking over the grass. The grass is matted down, but again, waist-high. Um, I was happy to see, that's the kind of vegetative cover I was hoping to see last fall, quite frankly. So it's, it's a work in progress. Um, up at the north end, let's see, the way the board's looking at it, there's an angle this way, there's the walking trail out there. That walking trail is about that much higher. They did make temporary provisions, um, a few months ago, they said that, that walking trail, because it's raised, was catching a lot of water that would have gone straight up the sheet of paper, straight north toward, toward Berry Street, um, away from the residences. Um, that water's now been diverted by creating some openings in the walking trail material and using some, um, some wattles to direct the water through there as a temporary measure. But, um, again, that's, that's another thing that was probably bringing water down toward the parking lot in the Y property, uh, that eventually when it got rerouted, uh, a few months ago, went up to the Berry Street properties where it should have, should not have. Um, so in summary, with respect to what's on site, I was happy to see what I said, saw. I'm glad I took the time to get out there today. Um, and again, I did, no work done at the basins yet and, and, um, I follow basin one A and, and to some extent one B, there is a sediment load there, fine gray material that's all going to have to be scraped out. And I, I would, um, with the board's permission, like to be more involved or the, the engineer from our office who was out there during construction when it first took, oh, just first started, have somebody out there on behalf of the board to take a look at work in progress, especially scraping out the basins, things that we can't see once they're covered up with, um, vegetative cover.
Thanks, Jeff. Um, what do you call it? I think what we should be doing is waiting another month because I went up there and the grass is growing. I understand that people are still upset about it, but if we don't give them another month to finish up some of these wattles, some of these slope interceptors, and then hopefully they get some vegetation on them, this is not going to tell until next year, to be honest with everybody. Because then you'll have full growth, you'll have the whole summer. Hopefully we will get small rainstorms in the summer. We get the 90-degree weather now, 80, 90-degree weather. It's going to dry out things, but we are going to need a little rain periodically to get this grass growing. Once the grass is growing, I think a lot of these problems are going to go away. And I mean, I went up there and I walked through a lot of it and the grass is tall, it's green. I'd like to just make a motion that we-
We're not done talking yet.
I know, but wait, wait for a month and give them another month.
Well, I think we need to finish having the discussion and make a motion.
Huh?
I want to hear more about him and his representation to the town while they're doing their stuff. I, that'd interest me. I don't know where the money's going to come from. That was my next question.
Well, they have 53G money for that. But we have the 53G money.
I don't know what the balance, um, there was 53G money there. Uh, we haven't used it all. I can check the balance. I, uh, and, you know, Madison has been responsive in terms of requesting additional monies. We, uh, the last time we got $15,000.
You'd be willing to refresh the account for additional inspections from Graves in addition to Westman Sampson's going to be doing basically the exact same thing Jeff was outlined for us, so, um, we're willing to-
It's invaluable to have people to, you know, have as resources on site when you're making decisions. Absolutely.
And, and what I really want to make sure that somebody can see on behalf of the town of Plainville is work that's going to get covered up. For example, the scraping of the stormwater basins. Establishing vegetative cover, whether it's this week, next week, next month, that can be seen at, at anyone's, uh, leisure. It's the things that are going to get covered up that I want to make sure somebody is able to put their eyes on. Quite frankly, I agree with you, Stan. It's, it's, um, it's going to take the fall growing season to really, really make a big difference. There's, I mean, there's a drastic improvement between December's conditions and today's conditions. There's still construction activity that will be through the, through the summer when the grasses can even become dormant or, and don't grow, don't thrive. But we've got that early, that, that fall, early fall growing season that I'd like to think by then everything's in place and it's a matter of make sure things are growing, make sure if there's any, for example, breaches or, or, or concentration of water that we want to avoid, little things like that should be able to be addressed then and there with the time to get grass grown on whatever they have to disturb to take care of those.
Um, one question I have is that temporary basin, do you think it is better, more beneficial to have it there or not?
Honestly, um, having listened through the conversations, not just tonight, but, but throughout, um, they've proved through the hydrology calculations it's not needed. The more impoundment, in my opinion, the better, but if it's either one, not allowed because of landowner rights, or two, is prone to breaching, I'd rather not see a pond the body of water that breaches frequently out there.
Uh huh.
There is the existing man-made swale that runs parallel to that, that was there long before the development. Um, in my opinion, that is a completely separate issue from the temporary basin that they call one C. Um, they've proven they don't need basin one C. Um, again, it's growing, growing and making the site hydrologically consistent with what was intended, which was far from the case in December. And part of that does include the upcoming modifications to the basins.
I just worry a little bit. It's like, I know right now it's summer and it's not raining a lot. And then all the problems started last year, late in the year, and then throughout the entire winter where everything is frozen and dead and gone. And then what's going to happen if we have ridiculous rain in January and February next year and there's no grass right now because it's, you know, dead? And, I mean, would that basin be better there for the winter time? Or is this all going to work in February if it's pouring for five days straight? Like with ice and snow and everything? I'm just worried about them, that it's going to just happen again.
I understand your point. Um, back to the pre versus post-analysis, we use standardized conditions.
Uh huh.
And one of them is no frost, no snow cover and so forth. But when a site is engineered and mathematically is hydrologically functioning similar to what it was pre-development, then if you apply the frost conditions to the, both the post-development conditions and the pre-development conditions, in theory, in my opinion, they, it should be about the same. So it might not be, even though it's not a good situation, frost conditions and what may have happened in the pre-development conditions probably wouldn't have been identical, but it would still be some-
Right, but in, in the pre, there were trees there, so-
Yeah, I was going to say.
It always had trees, where everything always trickled down slowly.
To our point.
Where now it's just like a-
There was never a point out here, pre-condition.
It's just a straight, you know, it comes right down off of the solar panels or it just hits the ground running because it's frozen and then, you know, it, it comes down a lot faster to the, it gets to the ground faster than it used to, even if the trees didn't have leaves, it still slowed it down.
Sure.
And they had roots.
Right. And when I say hydrologically functioning, you're absolutely right. Trees absorbed, created less runoff than grass.
Uh huh.
Hence the basins and hence the slope interrupters.
Right.
My biggest concern back in December is there was a lot of bare ground throughout the site. That's a far cry from grass.
Uh huh.
It's not trees. And, and it's, it's, if you look at the site as a whole, as far as hydrologically functioning, it's at the discharge end of the development while the way you're looking at the land over here.
Uh huh.
That's, that's what I mean by hydrologically.
Right. No, I know that there's other things done to get, I'm just worried about that basin if it, you know, maybe it should be more permanent and built up like the other ones that have how you have it, so it makes sure, if it does overflow or whatever, it sheets down and-
The plan would have been to line it with rip wrap. Obviously that comes at a cost, so without the blessing at the time from the YMCA, we weren't going to place, you know, a couple hundred feet, two hundred feet of rip wrap. So, you know, if we were to work that out somehow, it would be reduced in size so that it's not a, it's not holding more. It's designed to be armored so that when the water's going over it, it does cool up a little, but it hits the rip wrap and slows down and is structurally solid versus before it was a temporary solution made out of-
Right.
You know, straw blankets.
I'm just trying to figure out why it's a problem. I, I still haven't really understood that.
Yep, yep, I'm sorry.
Who's raising their hand?
All right. I, I have nothing else but a-
Okay.
Well, I, I personally-
And I would like to see if we can have him review things that are happening personally.
Can we, need to make a motion on that? And then do we need to do something like that for that to happen? Or is it just a go ahead and do it?
Or is it something we can have you discuss, make sure they want to fill-
We're already engaged.
The 53G again, like-
Under the original permit, we're already engaged and have done construction.
Right.
So this is, this is part of that, in my opinion.
Right, so we just need the funds.
Yeah, well, I, again, I haven't, I didn't look specifically at where we are today. Um, it's an administrative process.
Yeah.
Jeff's right. He's, you know, they've been engaged. I'll see that, uh, there's enough money to cover a predictable amount of work. And if there isn't, um, you know, we'll make the request for additional funds.
Well, like I said, Adam, Adam, Adam had already-
I already-
Was so gracious to say he would replenish the fund to make it happen.
Madison would replace the fund.
Yeah.
Was that detailed enough, Adam?
But I do suggest that since the completion of the interrupters are scheduled for the end of next week, barring, you know, it looks like we have some good weather coming up, I think having Graves go out by the end of next week to see the final bit of the slope interruptors being constructed and reviewing the previous ones. So if that works for his schedule, I think that would be best in the event that he sees something that needs to be modified, or this will be there and we can implement it, uh, before we move on to the bigger pictures. I'm sorry.
Just administratively, the way we usually handle it is when the project starts, you have the, um, you know, the applicant meet with Jeff and Jeff advises them of what he needs so that he can satisfactorily write a letter at the end saying he's satisfied the work is complete. So that's usually done between Jeff and the applicant. If Jeff feels he needs more inspections to be able to write that final review, then that's something he, I think he's already got from the board. I, I think he needs to just notify us that there's going to be more inspections and the board's admit, seems to be fine with that.
Uh huh.
I don't think he needs to do anything.
Right.
As long as you have the money to- Yeah, that, I, again, I haven't looked. Uh, there certainly was money, uh, up until now. Without that final order from Jeff, you're not, you're never going to get a sign off. So it's, it's in your, your best interest to, to do what he, he's asking for.
And what I do appreciate is, I like to go out and see the site myself, but I want someone from Graves Engineering, whether it's myself or the engineer working with me, one of us to see it in the presence of, of their contractor so that if there's issues, Adam's point just a moment ago, they can be talked about, worked out, brought to the contractor's attention then and there, rather than put it in paper and try to filter it back.
Right now, we're playing ping pong with you guys back and forth, right?
Not really, not really. There wasn't, there really wasn't a need for us to be out there only because I knew a lot of work had to get done. What I wanted to be able to do is come into this meeting and talk to this board about what I saw now, not last December. And, and that, that was the important thing in my eyes, why I wanted to make sure I saw it. But I didn't have the opportunity to interact with the contractor because there was no contractor there. The equipment was packed. It was later in the day.
John, did you have something you wanted to say?
I'm just much to your point, I, I'm concerned about when the grass is there, you know, eight months of the year in this state and it gets icy and, and, you know, I'm concerned about that because that's where we have the major flooding, is, you know, the winter. So, I mean, it started in August of last year, but it got continuously worse. And I understand that, you know, everyone's putting a lot of faith in, in the grass growing high and that's great in the summer, but what happens in the winter?
Right. And I think they're also saying that the other changes they may are supposed to help it too, even if there isn't grass.
Lot of work yet to be done, yeah.
Mike?
It was seeded late in the summer, early fall last year, so vegetation that was there in the fall during some of the heavier rain events like September and again in December, the grass is very young. I mean, the roots are very shallow. I'm sure a lot of the grass, it's certain, it's, it's rocky, washed out. And that's why additional topsoil and everything's been brought in and, uh, you know, if we have a drought, then we've got grass that's not growing, we'll bring water trucks to the areas that aren't. I mean, obviously in the areas that are this high, we're not going to need it, but the difference is like, when the, when the grass dies in the fall, you're going to have, you know, three-foot-high grass that's going to wilt over. But it's not going to lay as flat, like almost an inch or two of what it was in the fall.
It's going to absorb the water.
Yeah, so you're going to have stronger roots that's going to protect the soil or you're going to have the grass matted over. Um, so that, that's, that's the major difference is you're going to have, and that's to Jeff's point, when he says in the fall, you're going to get that second growing season. Your roots are going to be even deeper. Um, when we do have to cut, you know, because it's too, too high, all that stuff that's going to fall is going to basically be like a top dressing of seeds. So when we do that towards the end of the summer and cut, uh, it's just, you know, to within the three-foot height, whatever it is, two-foot, that basically re-germines again and it grows even fuller. So that's where that second or third growing season really will be.
Plus, plus it mulches the area and that mulch absorbs all of that. It gives back to the growth of what was there originally, the thatch.
Okay.
Hey, Don. Uh, Adam, you said that with the, uh, that they'd done some sort of update. How much of a percentage has the grass to date cut back? You said you had, that they had made some sort of reports on that, right? With the grass growing thus far, how much you think that's done a percentage of the water reduction flowing, you know what I'm saying?
Um, you're asking for a percentage of grass growth?
Well, no, you had just stated, didn't you state 20 minutes ago that someone had made a report to you that the grass to date has reduced some of the flow as opposed to where it's been thus far? Did I misunderstand that?
I think Jeff alluded to that, if I recall, myself.
Did he refer to the, uh, stormwater and that report by Todd?
Oh, Todd. Yeah, so one of our consultants that goes out there does a report about sediment, like, it's stormwater pollution prevention, so it deals with sedimentation, erosion and, um, you know, stabilization. So in this area here, this is just a bullet point that I've brought with me that he created for me that shows, you know, originally we had removed sediment from basin two B, uh, sorry, one B here, here. And so this is just, it, it looks big, but it's just to highlight it. And so where there is large areas of, um, you know, unstabilized surfaces, rocky soils, like right now, all that's left is in the center area of, of, above one B, the area to the right of one B. Whereas before, we had a lot of area, um, to the right of two B, two A. We had some on a high point to the east. And so that's where his report is focused on getting stabilization because it's unstabilized, the dirt, you know, once the dirt gets picked up, it's going to create erosion and grilling. And so that's, that's what I meant by, you know, this is really, as far as what's left, I'd say that this is probably under 10% left to be stabilized and reseeded because they're going to be working, uh, on those slope interruptors. So this is left to the end.
And I guess one more thing for the board. I mean, everyone's, you guys have been awesome, but have you guys given any thought to at what point you guys believe you'll be satisfied that just the board is showing them turning this thing on or not? Maybe it's still premature, but I'm just curious if you've given any thought to that.
No, I mean, I think we're going to wait until Graves feels that they're at enough completion time that they can.
At the end of the day, the hydrology calculations and all that sound great, but at what point is it going to be acceptable for them to have power in my in-laws and all these other people's places still having water problems?
Right.
That's the only question I'm asking you guys to think. I don't expect an answer. I just, is there a sweet spot on that? I don't know.
There's a gap, in my opinion.
I think so too.
And the gap is, is the risk, right? I mean, it's, it's the risk of these people have worked hard with us, showed, you know, I, I don't think it was per se put together perfectly. Obviously it fell apart in the beginning, right? Um, but they've, they've stuck by what they're doing, you know? They're not running away. They're, they're, they're standing up, doing the best they can. I, I know you guys deserve all the backing in the world from us and then some. We're trying to represent you. So, I mean, in my own head, I see, you know, if all the corrections are made and all the construction and both people really like the fill-in and, and all that stuff, I, I, I say it's time to turn the lights on, but it, here's the gap, here's the gap with me. I always wanted to say turn the lights on until you short out my lights, meaning I'll shut the lights off if you don't, if it doesn't work.
You guys have their thoughts.
You know what I mean? And I don't know if that's even physically possible because it's like, if it doesn't work- because it's like, if it doesn't work, then what are you going to do?
Right.
You know, and, and I'm, there's my gap I'm talking about. But they've done everything that they've can, I mean, I can't sit there saying that they're slacking. So there's, it's a risk.
So one possible possibility, and again, it's the first time we're talking about it, is they could get, and I don't know if you need financing or whatever, but is to get a temporary.
C O.
C O for a certain amount of time to run you through until you're happy that the drainage is done, I mean, and it's working properly, so that at least they could get income coming in while they're doing this and, and have, you know, make sure that they're working in good faith, and then they can get, start making some money. But if it's not done, you can shut it off. And I don't, I'm, I'm just throwing that out there as an example of one thing. I have no idea how that works with your financing and how it works with what you need for your, bring on your end, but that's one thing you could talk about, whether it's work or not. I'm just. And they may have better ideas of how, how to do that than I do, but.
They've already lost six months of productivity.
And they've, these people have lost.
I know.
Six months of care home.
So there's no winner here, but there has to be, if, if you can't bridge that gap, someone's going to potentially lose. Now, you could, you, the risk might be, it might all turn out great, and it might not, you know?
I think while both parties are working in good faith.
Yeah.
Both parties should work in good faith.
I think they have been.
Like, that's what's been happening right now, so you can discuss that, if you have options of how that question can get resolved, maybe you can present that to the board, I'm just. I think there are financial arrangements that can be made that provides the opportunity for money to be made while simultaneously using that, that revenue stream to ensure, you know, well, I, I don't want to get into details, but, so to ensure that revenue stream is available, uh, to mitigate any problems that arise. It, I mean, the sunshine's there, and it's obviously going to be there for the next few months in, in its, at its peak, so it, in essence, it's a shame to let that opportunity go by. But rather than just leave it dormant, let it generate revenue, but that revenue has to be secured in some way such that. Well, just so long as you can, you can turn it off. Well, I, I mean, that's.
That's the key right there.
Right.
Turn it on tomorrow, but make sure we have the switch that we can chill it back off.
Right.
And that's all, I, I have no problem with that.
Well, as a practical, and I have no idea.
Tomorrow.
Well, you. If this generates a dollar's worth of revenue a day, obviously it's more, then every day it's shut off, that's a dollar lost. So from, from their perspective, they're losing it under any circumstances. So if that dollar, rather than go to them, is secured in a, a fund of some sort that is then released, should there be no problems, then everyone wins because A, there's no problems, and the, the gen, the, the revenue has been generated rather than just leave it dormant the way it is. But I think there's some, you know, there's some way, some mechanism to be able to legally set this up so that, you know, you've got access to the revenue should you meet your obligations, and if you don't, you're not going to have the, the revenue anyway. But again, that's not a negotiation that takes place here, I think.
No.
That's a, that's a similar.
Or tonight.
Right, exactly. I like your method better, actually, I think, but you, you, he's, he's a financial guy. But, but I, I think, it sounds like the boss wants to work with you, so that you're not losing money if you can, if you can help it, and we can try and get this done.
Gary?
Don, I don't believe we should allow them, you know, a compliance permit until all the residents that have been affected have been taken care of. Once you say yes, you're not getting to shut it off again. So all the residents that have been affected and haven't been in touch with their insurance adjuster or everything, and had their houses taken care of with mold or whatever, you say yes, there's no turning back, and they'll walk away. You cannot say turn it on today and shut it off next week.
I don't, my, what I'm suggestion, suggesting in terms of concept, again, there's electricity potentially, potentially being generated that's being foregone. Those panels have a life expectancy that, you know, six months has gone by and their life expectancy is, has diminished by six months.
Yeah.
So there, there's a benefit to them, uh, to agree to something that says, we're not going to get the money if we don't get the thing turned on. So we get it turned on, the money goes into, and again, I'm just thinking out loud, into a fund that is accessible to them if they've met their obligations. If they haven't met their obligations, they don't get access to the funds. They don't get access to the funds with it turned off, so I don't see anyone winning that way. I don't know if there's a, a way, I mean, clearly, based on some of the legal stuff I've seen going back and forth, you've got access to attorneys. So there may be a way to set this up such that they don't get access to the funds, the funds go into an accessible account that if we still have problems, that's where the account money comes from, and if they don't have problems, then after meeting certain performance standards, they get their money.
There'd have to be a sunset date set on.
Oh, yeah, yeah, again, I'm, again, we're just speaking out loud, but, yeah, still, I would use.
Carol?
When is the project expected to go online?
Last year.
But no, I want to hear from, I want to hear from these people. Is it all ready to go?
Uh, those answers, I don't, I'm not involved in that at all, so. Me, I deal with, you know, the engineering, soil water, construction, so I don't get involved in interconnection, utility agreements.
So you're not necessarily waiting?
I, other than handling or being brought in back in February when these issues arise, I have not been involved in any of those aspects of the show. That's not my role.
So maybe some of this needs to be discussed and figured, a plan brought forward so we can look at it and determine, and in the meantime, a lot of this work will be completed, hopefully, so.
And one major, and one major action thing is you guys working together onsite, which is great.
Ask another simpleton question from an engineering standpoint. The presence of that temporary detention basin, its continued presence, does that impede any work that you're, you're planning to do? Because again, the simpleton in me says if it's not necessary, terrific. And the way I find it not necessary is after you've done everything you're going to do, and it rains, and I walk in, in there, and there's no water in it, it's not necessary.
Right.
So.
That's what I would rather see, is leave it there until you know it's going to rain, it's not going to fill up.
The extent that the town needs to work with the YMCA, yeah, we're willing to do, and I say we, and I've spoken with the town administrator, and certainly in what limited capacity I have, and we want to make this thing work at the end of the day.
Can I just make a comment?
Please.
If you have the depression onsite, whenever there's no water, there's always going to be water.
Right, but I, I, I mean, if it rains an inch, I expect maybe a couple inches as opposed to a couple of feet, and that's, that's my simple way of telling whether that thing is useful or not.
Are you thinking it's going to ruin the sheen process?
It, it's down gradient of an uphill area, there's always going to be water.
But do you think it's going to affect what your plan is if it's there? Like, a negative impact?
No, for now, it's just, uh, it's out of the way. I mean, it's going to collect water, to her point, it's down gradient.
Just in the rain, right.
Yeah, but it's going to be, the rate in which the water gets to that location after the two-B level spreader is installed is going to be much slower, more gradual. Um, the, the intent originally, as it being a proposed permanent solution, would have been to reduce the height of the berm so that it's not storing as much, which, you know, could present a failure point at some point, you know, over time, you've got to maintain these, but the point of it really was just to be a four or five speedboat, right? Just hits it, it's armored, water kind of backcharges a little bit into it and just flows over the top. At a lower, you know, so that way, there's less than half the volume of what's there now.
Right, but again, the simple part of me says every gallon of water there is one less gallon I have to worry about these folks receiving.
Okay. True, but it, it depends on how that water is then released because if, if, if you're releasing five gallons of water at once versus one gallon over an hour, it's going to make a big impact, which is what we're attempting, which is not attempting, but that's what the design and calculations prove, is that by holding the water back up there, slowly releasing it, and then potentially with that other piece, uh, the temporary one, which if it were to be permanent, that's what we would travel minimum by having a second one. So, uh, no, I'd definitely be open to any communication with town and if there's a way to, to YMCA, but, um, we don't onsite again or with the town, so we're going to continue that.
All right. Five for tonight.
Yeah, let's go.
Gary?
Can I just go back to what you said about, um, the process for us in terms of the damages that have been had because the, um, April 4th, the adjuster came out and looked at my house, and I know that he had looked at several others and asked for a lot of documents to be filed, which I've done, and I haven't heard another word. In the very beginning of what you were saying, Adam, you talked about, you know, there's experts and evaluators and everything, and I don't want that to get lost. And I will say that, I mean, it hasn't rained significantly in a while, but it is slowing down at my house from what I understand, so that's great. But I still have, as, as the insurance adjuster said, the most damage, um, I won. But, so I'd just like to know what that process is going to be other than continually spending it almost two months.
I understand, and, you know, for me, it takes all of those other people to get the information back to me, me to report to you, but tomorrow, we're having a call because the, so the part is like, yeah, there's the people that come up to look at your house, but then there's the people that look at li, liability. They're looking at the contractors, they're looking at us, they're looking at, you know, whoever, engineers, this and that, so multiple investigations being done, to my understanding, and the final report is due by the end of this week, so, um, it, yeah, I know it started on April 4th, I don't know how long this process usually takes, but, um, it seems like it's, we're getting more answers tomorrow, and we'll be able to hopefully provide, uh, a response to each water individually. Um, I just, I don't have an answer of when the process will be over, so this is not my full day.
Right, and we have to be careful, as the board, we're the town. This is a private matter between you and Madison Energy, so to me, that's not, we can't really even comment on it. Myself, I'm not going to make any comments. It's a private matter, and that's the way it has to be.
Well, I don't see anything wrong with them coming and discussing it with them in here and letting, and giving them a timeline, so I'm happy to hear that here, just so that they know, and it's on record and anyone watching, because we know we have a huge audience. Tina?
Tina, I've already made a question for Adam. Do you know if all of the butters, the residents who had water issues have actually met with the experts and adjusters and whoever on that team that's dealing with the damage?
As far as I know, everybody that's reached out to us with a potential claim has been spoken to by our specialists. Does anybody that hasn't for any reason? Uh, but everybody that, you know, emails, phone calls, that people have reached out to me, all of them, mine all.
Gary, you have it?
No, Adam, I've reached out to you, and I sent you all my photos and everything, and on March 19th, I received an email from the adjuster that he would be in touch with me. And now it's May, and I have not met him at my house at all.
I'll look into that because, uh, it was on his report that he sent us.
He has not contacted me by email or my wife.
I think he was at my house the week after that.
Remember, you told him he was coming to your house.
Right.
He has not, he's out.
Okay.
I apologize, I was on his list, and I will bring this up with him tomorrow.
Okay.
He didn't contact me anytime during the day, I can leave work at any time to meet him, so.
All right, so.
That's what my comment earlier was, nothing should be turned on until the residents are satisfied with what has been done.
All right, so for the next, I don't know if it's the next meeting, but you're going to be going out there next week, right? You're going to be going out to the site next week, probably, to look at stuff?
Yeah, I'm going to ask Adam to, the boss in his court, to coordinate with me, and we will.
So I don't know, we should do the next meeting or the following meeting, meet up again and discuss where we are, and maybe you have proposals for what you can do about a temporary measure or whatever, and hopefully a timeline for the neighbors.
Yeah, I mean, hopefully, the neighbor thing picks up pace because, you know, you're going to want it to be closer than it is later.
When's our next meeting?
Uh, just June 17th.
Is that on a Wednesday?
Oh, it's June, so it's almost, it's almost a month.
No, this one June 4th.
Oh, this one June 4th.
Thank you.
I was going to say, it's a month. Okay, so maybe the June 17th would be a good one, or is that too far?
No, I don't think so.
Like, as I said, this is always on the agenda, so depending on where we're at, um, you could do either one.
Okay, or the 4th, so. Until he's done.
What day, Joe?
With an.
So Adam, what we would like to see is just.
June 5th is a Wednesday, is our next meeting, and then June 7th.
Where the work is, so I don't know if the 4th is going to be too early, one minute, or the 17th would be better, we can play it by ear, but like, it would be nice to have Graves come out and look at things, get to a point where some of the more work is done, and maybe have a timeline for the neighbors. And then also, if you, if you want to have your team look at something that's a suggestion for some kind of temporary, like you said, with an account, or what they could do to, to turn things on, and if that's what they want to do.
I'll bring that up internally, um, but as far as the 17th go, I know I physically can't be here.
Okay.
But I can provide updates, photos, we have drawn photos that we take, obviously, we'll have reports from Westland Sands, and I'm sure Graves will potentially have a site this by then. Uh, we'll have sort of reports by then, that should be down to the very bare minimum of just waiting for grass to grow, so we'll be able to provide all of that in advance, and, um, yeah, so my, my intent was before tonight to have a solid schedule from our insurance company of where things were at, because it had been two weeks since I got the last report, which I just looked at, and it said on, they left Gary a voicemail, so I'm just going to confirm his phone number after this to make sure that I get him, because, uh, so the report two weeks ago, I just looked at, and since I haven't heard anything, I reached out to him yesterday, I was looking for an update, and they told me they might, so I'll call tomorrow, so.
Okay.
So I'll have an answer for that shortly.
Okay. That'll be great. All right, so I think we're good then for this for tonight?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Stay tuned.
Unless we have a horrific rainstorm between now and June 4th, hopefully, everything will be good. Thanks. All right, oh my God, I just need another pen. Okay. So next up is Spy, thanks. Next up is Chestnut Street, sorry.
Thank you, Ellen.
All right, so, yeah, the last two reports, it says.
Hi.
Well, I got all that, I have.
Mike Corey, uh, Madoff Corey for the applicant. I have, um, I have eleven by seventeen copies of the concept plan that we submitted, along with copies of our May 7th letter, we requested informal review. Would you like me to hand them to you, would it be easier?
Yeah, yeah, I like.
I'm going to go to the rest one, I'll be right back.
All right. Been a while. Do you? Go, go. It's been ongoing. Thank you.
Uh, why is this not blowing up for me?
I have this.
It's a good plan.
Huh?
It's a good plan. Better school, yeah, so we're gonna cut it like, get it up to this. If I saw this, I'd go, this is awesome, yeah, get this one.
What, this old house? Are they gonna knock it down?
Okay, ready?
Yes. Madam Chair, as I said, I'm Mike Corey, Madoff and Corey for the applicant. The applicant being Taj Construction. I'm Er Taj, the principal of Taj Construction's here, along with his engineer, Carlos Ferreira. On May 7th, we submitted to Mr. Fernandez and his predecessor, Chris Yarworth, a proposal that we requested this board's informal review of with regard to a four-lot development on a 28-acre parcel off Chestnut Street. I know this, um, this particular piece of property has been the subject of a couple of failed developments that were a lot larger than what we're planning. We're hoping that this four-lot proposal in a cluster development under Chapter 500, Section 22 of your zoning code works. As I said, the, it's a 28-acre parcel of undeveloped land designated with addresses of 0, 12, 14, 16, 19, and 21 Chestnut Street, properties in an RA district. We're proposing to develop the front portion of the property with four residential lots. Two lots labeled 1 and 2 on the second page of the plan in front of you are proposed to be developed as, each as a single-family home between 4,500 and 5,500 square feet of floor space with four bedrooms and three to three and a half baths. And then the second, the third and fourth lots would be improved by one duplex each with units measuring 17, 1,750 square feet with three bedrooms, two baths, and each with a two-car garage on the ground floor. The, under your zoning code, the RA district can be developed in a cluster development provided they meet the conditions under Chapter 500, Section 22B and C. We had, in the latter, we went through those various conditions for cluster development. I can go through them, but I think, this is a concept plan, we have, we have to prove it to you in a, in a full proposal. But we believe we, we certainly meet the minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. This is a 28-acre parcel. Forty, there's a minimum 40% of total land area that would be dedicated to common open space, which the developer is planning to do. There needs to be at least 40% of the property as open land. At least 75% here shall be suitable for passive or active recreation use. We believe we'll also be able to show in the ultimate application for site plan approval and applications for whatever special permits need pinned down are necessary, the requirements, the dimensional lot and yard requirements under 22D. Each of these lots would have, be served by their own septic system with the two duplex lots. Each lot, each duplex lot would have its own shared between the two units. We're, and we're ready. Our intent in coming to you is to, we've vetted things for the past couple of months with Mr. Fernandez and Mr. Yarworth. It's our desire, before we go into the full-blown application process, to get your sense and any suggestions you have before we go into the real design. In addition to that, if we get favorable view from you guys, what we'd like to do is speak to the neighbors in some kind of informal presentation, get their input, hear their concerns and deal with that. And pursuant to the cluster development requirement, we're ready to donate up to 17 to perhaps 20 acres of the backland to the town or another nonprofit organization that we'd like for recreational use. The property, a good portion of it is wetlands, but it's certainly good for walking or biking trails. We think that the proposal fits within the cluster development well. And we've scaled the project down to make this hopefully appealable to the town and get a favorable sense from you guys as we go to the actual application process where we'll prove that we're meeting requirements and conditions.
Can I give some background on this, Tom? If you don't mind, it's one of the reasons I.
Well, one thing I wanna say is it definitely has to go to conservation. They're all over the buffer zone.
So the, I'm not sure yet, some of the work is out of, oh yeah, it looks like it is, some of the wells are within it, yep, so.
One of the houses is in it.
So let me just give you some background, I've been looking at this lot since when I was first here. People have come in with developments, 55-plus senior overlay subdivisions with multiple, multiple lots on them. And they've, they've, they've been coming before the board for years and I've been saying, this is ridiculous, you're on end of, dead-end road, it's narrow, there's no streets, there's no anything. And we've had numerous arguments about this, and so I don't think any of those have ever come to the board. They've, I've sort of discouraged them all, but it's been like a thorn in my side for 10 years, because it's, it's a beautiful piece of land in town, they wanna develop. And in my opinion, everything that's come in has been overdeveloped, too much, too much for the neighborhood, too much for the road, too much for utilities, just not a good idea. These are the first people who've listened, I think, and I gave suggestions on how to do this. So they came in with, what, a 14-lot subdivision of? Eight lots, eight lots subdivision, and it involved crossing wetlands and again, it would involve a huge fight for the town and for them, I think it was not a very good design. So I suggested to them, they look at the cluster process here. If you look at the old plan from the 60s or something, I think it is, they had six lots there. So those lots, that's an approved subdivision, it hasn't been repealed, it's sitting there, they had six lots. So I said, how can I get six lots in a better design than this? It stays away from the wetlands, doesn't involve a new road, this has a bunch of problems with it. So the suggestion, if you go back to the other one, was let's do a cluster, let's, let's add, fill out the cul-de-sac. So it's a full cul-de-sac, it's only a half cul-de-sac right now, so that would involve a subdivision plan. And then if they go a cluster, they can go down to 80 feet of frontage, they can get the four lots. And I said, if you can go two singles and two duplexes, they could theoretically go four duplexes, but I said, look, it's a special permit for a cluster, stick to the six lots you already have, build it this way, it's a better design, you'll fill out the road, the town won't have anything else to maintain, and you can get the six lots you had before, you can go away from the, move a little bit more away from the wetlands and the town can get the land at the back. Now, there's no access to the town at the back here, which we usually look for, but this butts up to the bridle path open space, which has parking for the public there. So I think that's probably not as big of an issue in this case. So this is the first time in 10 years where I've seen a plan that I think is intelligently designed and is in scope with what they can reasonably get here. So I asked them to come in informally, I don't want them to spend a lot of money if they can't get it through the board, but personally, I, I'm, I'm happy that they listened and came in with something that I think is reasonable in this case. That's my personal opinion, but I don't know how the board thinks and.
Madam Chair, Carlos Ferreira from the, the engineers here. Carlos, would you be able to address the proximity of the wetlands, about the zones?
Well, I mean, on the layout in here, like, so like the lot, the lot where we have the wetlands in here, we are, with the grading, we are all like 35 feet, like, no disturbance, like, away from, like, all the grading, so we're not touching that, you know, most of like, on lot 3, we are 100 feet away from it. In lot, on lot 2, and in lot 1, we are also like, I mean, we're like 35, most of like the grading on the 35, so. It's not, I don't think like, we're gonna have like that much of a problem with your conservation.
Right, but I still think you need to file a conservation.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I was saying that we're not gonna file for that.
Okay.
So like, on lot, on lot.
You have to, because.
On lot.
I don't see that we're gonna need like any waivers for this.
Right, right, I just wanna make sure you're filing.
So just be careful, like, on lot 2, on lot, on lot 3, you've got the well right on the 35-foot no-touch line. So that's not gonna fly, that's gonna have to be adjusted off, because you know you're gonna have construction around the well. 35, I mean, no-touch doesn't mean you put the well on the 35-foot line and pretend that you're not gonna go on the other side.
Around it, right.
You know, be realistic here, because the Conservation Commission has got going on it, so they're not idiots, they know what they're doing. And they're gonna, you're gonna have, when she says she's interested in conservation, she is. So watch out for stuff like that.
Are you gonna make, are you gonna make all your Board of Health regulations for wells and septic?
We're gonna have to, I have no idea.
Yeah, that, that is a big one, because you gotta be so. So you can make your distances?
Anyway, this is a definitely no-.
Yeah, so one of the things we do, Stan, if you remember, they probably won't make the nitrogen loading. But we, but we reserve that right for them in the open space. So when they donate the open space to the Conservation Commission, you reserve their rights for the nitrogen loading. And I got a sample that we just put in, everything, you submit it to the Conservation, use Article 97, I reserve those rights. And that's a straight conveyance to the Concom, you don't have to go to town meeting. So that's how we prefer to do it, and we own the abiding land as part of bridle path. Or maybe that, bridle path might be a homeowner's solution that was older.
That's the homeowner's.
But it's tough public access to it.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, because I've gone on.
So we try to make it simple, so you don't have to spend a whole bunch of money on the CR, you just write the deed to the town and you're on your way. So, and then we can control it and.
That's the process, as we understood it.
It makes it very simple, yes.
Thank you.
I think it looks nice. Anyone in the audience have any questions? No, okay, just checking.
You're in the ballot, correct? You're in the ballot.
We are also completing the.
Now, my other question is, you have a couple of single-family homes there. Are they gonna, because to get a duplex there, would they have to go ZBA?
No, so, so number, number one, they could theoretically, they could do four lots of duplexes if you were so inclined. My feeling was they had an existing six-lot subdivision, stick it to six, stick the six units, they agreed, and that's what we agreed to. But if you were, wanted more development here, you could technically go four duplexes. So you can't do a duplex in the RA zone, but if you're doing a cluster subdivision, I think you can go up to four units on a lot, because they'll let you, they'll let you combine them. So this seemed like a good mix to get the six, you had the lots for four frontage, and I, we tried to balance it out, and they were very good at working with me on this to do that. And I think this will finish up the end of the road nicely, it'll be off the street, there'll be nice units. We haven't had a lot of housing going into town really, so there's no other lots in town, I'm pretty certain they'll go for a good price. But, and it's a beautiful area, and hopefully it won't be too much of a strain. And the town won't have to be fighting these projects that keep coming in all the time, they're a nightmare to deal with, some of these people.
The reason I went with the duplexes is to provide affordability, you know, with the housing crisis going on, so the duplexes kind of.
This, no, duplexes are 700,000 in Plainville, how is that affordable? A half of a duplex.
But the single-family homes are 1.2.
1.3, 1.4.
Yeah.
1.5.
It's all relative.
But that's what affordability, affordability is 700,000 for half of the duplex.
That's the world we live in now.
Affordable for the attorney.
Yeah, it's the damn lawyers, is what it is.
You know, unfortunately, I grew up in Sharon, so I've seen everything kind of skyrocket throughout the years and, you know, these days, I guess, 100,000 considered someone affordable.
I live in Canton and due to the Karen Reed case, our values are depleting by the week, but that's neither here nor there. Also, as Mr. Yarworth noted, we're gonna be completing the cul-de-sac a full circle, which I think would be beneficial to the town as, as Amherst's colleague said, it would, certainly the plow drivers will appreciate it. I've never seen a half, a half cul-de-sac before, but we can get it.
They couldn't afford a full one back then.
Yeah, no, I understand. But we, what we wanted to do was get your sense as to whether this is something that you might be comfortable with. Again, no commitment. When, then we go to the neighbors, see if they have any input, and then get to work on a full set of plans. We're gonna be potentially closing on this in June, purchasing the property from the current owner, who's anxious to sell, he's out of state and.
Sylvia, what's that, Sylvia?
Yes. Yes, he's represented by Dale Rose in Foxborough, and he's been, Dale's been pushing him to get rid of it. He's doing nothing with it.
I've been looking at this like, literally for 10 years, I think, so with, with sales and.
Tina?
I just have a question about the access road that comes off of Chestnut, where that also did, and then go touch, so I can't tell you this map, I know it was on the other one, the other drawing.
That's the old map, though, they're not gonna have that road. That one in the middle?
No, no.
That road was previously approved, Tina. So that's an existing subdivision, which gives them some rights, so it makes it harder to argue with them. I mean, we have, we have plenty, we have leverage.
Joe, I'm just curious where.
That was like 1960 plan or something, but it's never built, it's not there.
Yeah, I didn't think it was.
Yeah, it's approved, it shows on the.
There's gonna be like a house on that.
It shows on the.
Right.
Yeah. In page 2, you can see the Chestnut Street cul-de-sac will be completed and that, that road would just not be there.
And what happens with the existing house that's on the lot on Chestnut Street? Is that gonna be redeveloped, is that?
Looks like there's a house on top of it.
The old one next door?
You get the little red one, and then you get the white one that's set in about 50 feet.
The white one that's far back, but you can't really see.
That's long apart, that's completely.
Yeah, is that part of the, is that part of your subdivision, is what you're taking down, so you land the land?
Yes.
What about that red cottage?
That's not.
That's not part of the.
It's not a part, so there's room in between this one here that's in the wetlands and that red cottage?
Yep.
So the, the red cottage is gonna be a separate issue they're gonna talk about, I think. The house, we don't want that house to deteriorate and turn into a death trap, so there'll be some discussions about what to do with that that might impact them, but that's nothing to do with today.
Okay, and.
And then just, just to go, just for a second, just to go back, when you submit the subdivision plan, can you submit a request for rescission of the old one?
Yes.
Just to clarify that, so that gets taken care of.
In that dotted line there, the line that goes through it, the line, this one here.
Okay.
What is that?
It's a property line.
Yeah, but go to the left, Joe, please.
I'm sorry?
Go to the right with your screen.
Go this way.
That's a different ownership.
Right, that's, that's gonna stay a different ownership, correct?
That's, uh, I believe the people sitting in the, in the audience, or not?
That would be the donated land.
No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Chestnut Street.
Oh, I'm sorry.
SE, that's, that's the voters.
That's.
Yeah.
Whose is that?
That's Carol's or Ray's.
Yeah, that's our land.
Louieke.
Did you get off the lady from Franklin there?
I'm sorry?
There's a lady.
Oh, that's our attorney, that's our attorney.
Oh, okay, because that was landlocked at one point. Is it still?
It's still landlocked. So that's, so that's not part of this, that's been taken out of this development.
Okay, so that's gonna continue to be theirs?
Yes.
And all the land around it is gonna be donated land?
Do you own the land in Rantham, do you want to? Yeah, so they have access from Rantham to it.
Okay, because there's a little.
They have a loop through or anything, because they won't own anything in Plainville, so.
Yeah, it goes in, it goes into Rantham, so it's half Rantham, half Plainville. And that little one part of this development that goes into Rantham, do we have to, does he have to go after something to do with that?
I don't think any of this goes into Rantham, is it?
It's a little corner, way up top.
And Rantham.
Right there, that little.
Right, but they're not developing that.
They're not developing that, so we don't really care about that, I don't think.
I don't know, I'm just, when you.
I don't, my, my.
Because when we did Amberfields, we owned half the back lots of those places.
So that little portion of the lot will be in Rantham, and I don't think that will impact us at all. So that little portion of the lot will be in Rantham, and I don't think that will impact us at all. May, but you can technically make it a separate parcel and just take it out.
I'm sure, yes.
Feed it to the people, and that way it's not part of our special permit.
That's probably the best way to do it. I was considering raising it with John Naff, the building commissioner in Rantham.
You could probably, Ray would probably let you sell it to him for about six thousand dollars.
Easy.
Or I'll buy it and put a trampoline there.
So why, what was the reason again, forgive me, I didn't, I didn't hear the reason. What was the reason again for not making these just single-family homes like the two that you have here?
Well, we, you know, there's, there's opportunity in economic return. To the extent we can make more, you know, put more units on. In consultation with, with Mr. Fernandez, Mr. Yarworth, we would like to do two lots with two large, single-family homes. And two, two lots with a duplex each.
So the rationale was, they have, they have an existing six lot subdivision.
Which is worse.
That was there, so I said, so I said to them, would you be willing to do no more than the six lots, or we have? But even though they could have put duplexes on those lots, so they could have technically, well, they couldn't, they couldn't put duplexes without a special permit. So they could have put six houses there. I said, would you be willing to do the six houses, knock over the road and reconfigure it, so there's no town road, no expense in the town? And, and the way to do that, they can only get four lots, is to do two singles and two duplexes, and they agreed to that. So you could go, if you wanted to, you could go to, you could go to four duplex lots, if that's something you wanted to do. But when I talked to them, I said, I don't wanna come to the board right now, at least, with anything more than what you already have permitted, which was six single-family lots. Which have issues with them, but, but that was kind of the template to get started on the discussions.
No offense, Stan, I'm tired of looking at duplexes in this town. Yeah, okay, I just, I was.
I look at the monstrosity houses.
No, everyone's got their likes and dislikes.
Right, so can't do that to them either.
I didn't, wasn't doing anything to them.
We're gonna mix. Half, they don't like singles, half don't like duplexes.
But it's like, I don't like looking at giant McMansions. I think they're ugly, so fair is fair. Tina?
I just got a comment about duplexes. I don't know if you guys have decided on any kind of style, if you do stack, side by side, whatever. But there are some duplexes up on School Street that you don't even realize they're duplexes, because of the way they're styled. They just look like one giant single-family home. Their entrances are dotted such a way that you can't tell.
Yeah, it can be very pretty.
Where on School Street?
Um, when you go up, just as you go around the bend, head up towards.
Wow.
The field of dreams.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That really sharp bend.
Yeah.
Up there.
Where's the duplexes up there?
There, there's one, there's at least one on the corner. I don't know what the number is.
Those aren't duplexes, those are single-family homes. No, no, they're all, Cindy Byersoff and John live in one, and then Emily lives in the other, and Mark lives in the other. Those are all single-family homes.
Well, it's part of, it's part of.
That exist.
Huh?
Right, right, they're cute. They're not like a.
Part of the cluster, you can look at architectural standards and, and get a schematic of the buildings, and it sounds like we have a builder who knows how to do that.
That's, that's, that's good to hear.
Ask for that.
Yeah. I mean, I, I like.
You won't get a final plan, but you can get, you can get a concept of what it's gonna look like and.
Yeah, I would like.
It sounds like the board's willing to go this way, so I, I think they're willing to spend a lot of extra money, so we have some confidence in what it's gonna look like.
It's, it's different seeing single-family homes or duplexes, you know, right next door to each other like that. But I mean, if done, like you said, if done correctly, I think that, that might be nice.
I think, I think personally, I think this is great for the town.
Across the street from two of them, so. And I'm a single family, and so is the one beside me, so.
It'll just make this site settled in, so nothing else can be done, yeah. So I think it's a great idea.
What were you saying, Joe?
I was just gonna say, based on the size of the houses, the single-family houses are, you know, four to six thousand feet, that's the size of a duplex. So, you know, they could be designed in such a way where they would just look like those two, two other houses.
You can make them deeper, you only see it from the street. You just make a deeper, deeper building.
Again, you've got square footage that can match.
Not in the wetland, you're right.
Our, our client is more inexperienced, a very good builder, but he's also committed.
He's twelve across the street, he'd be that experienced.
Yes, you know how, for twelve, it's amazing how much experience he's had in his twelve years.
It's amazing how everyone looks so young when you retire.
Yeah. The schools are really good in Sharon. They teach you great things.
Well, so the big houses, though, I guess, if you're gonna do a six thousand square foot house, you're gonna be selling it for one point eight to two point two.
Stanley, that's irrelevant.
I know, but I'm just telling you.
Stanley's calculating.
Yeah, you won't help the neighbors, but you wanna talk about their sales?
Well, that's gonna bring up the nails, that's gonna bring up everybody on Chestnut Street.
Well, plus it'll protect them from stuff that might happen in the future, so that's what's another one to go. You gotta get a reasonable use out of the land.
So I don't know about these two, but I think it does.
So I think you got your answer.
So, so Chris, will this be your parting gift to us?
This is something.
Weston Street, I hope.
This is something that, that again, one of the reasons, I can't, I didn't come here just for this, but this is one of the reasons I came here, cuz I think this is good for the town. And it's been, this has been really a thought on my side. I have had so many fights. I have had complaints to the town administrator about me, cuz I'm arbitrary and terrible person. Cuz I don't want a hundred units to go here, and I'm like, true, I just wanna get this off my plate. And somebody came in to finally listen to me, I'm like, yes, thank goodness, please, please, board. So, so I don't know, but I, I think this is a good deal, so.
So he would like to know the next steps.
Preliminary plan.
So the next steps would be, no, not a preliminary plan. The next steps would be coming in for a subdivision and a rescission of the old subdivision, subject to these approvals. And the special permit for a cluster, open space development.
Trouble is not.
And, and you need a wetlands filing, and a wetlands filing. And when you do the wetlands filing, we have a stormwater management bylaw. So the stormwater management bylaw is gonna get incorporated into that wetlands filing, so you don't have to file for it. That'll be incorporated into your NOI. But you have to watch that thirty-five foot no-touch, do not go into that zone, cuz you'll get yelled at. And I want, I'm also gonna wanna see, when you get your perks done and your numbers done, if we can tweak some of these lots, so we get a little more open space. Then I want, well, Joe or the new guy, whoever's coming in here, there'll be another new planner, would like to see that. And they're gonna, and they're gonna call either me or Joe for help probably on this, so one of us will have our eyes on it. So, so normally, we try and get access to the open space. I don't think you can get that through here, just cuz of the way this is laid out. And, but we do have access from the abutting parcel, so I think that's good.
All right, do you wanna, do you wanna keep that in the homeowners association, so we can get more taxes, though?
We won't get much more taxes.
Conservation.
No, I'd rather have it in conservation.
Homeowners Association, then they stop people from walking there, the public can't use it.
All right.
It's like ten dollars a year, and, yeah, it's ten dollars a year. Stanley, you could do that out of your doughnut money.
No, I'd rather have it go into conservation.
You too.
Yeah, me too.
I'm sure Tom will too.
You need five people on the board, too, cuz two of them are out today.
Oh, okay.
So when you come, I think you wanna have five.
Right.
Because you need a minimum of four votes to get a special permit.
And you'll need, you'll need Board of Health, so Board of Health puts it drainage also, they have their own drainage permits. You gotta do the, you gotta make sure the wells meet all the setbacks and everything. You're gonna have to talk to Ryan, cuz he has issues. So there's an issue with, with the abutment that you have to deal with. So you gotta just make sure, I'm not, off the top of my head, what the setbacks are, if there's a local hundred foot or fifty feet off a well in for septic system, so.
Yeah.
But we can, you can look up on that and make sure.
There's so much from a wetland, too, and a well, so be careful.
So, so when you file concurrently with, you can file the subdivision, and they get different timelines, you only two decisions, but file concurrently with everything. File with Board of Health at the same time, and then what we'll do, when, when it comes in, the engineering can go right out to Graves Engineering, who you saw here earlier. They can start, they can start doing the review before the public hearing even. And, and you also, if you wanna submit fifty-three G money to the town ahead of time, you're, you're available to call them and ask them questions as you're designing it. Cuz they'll be doing the review, so you don't, if you have a question, there's what curve number to use, or whatever, whether heck, you know, whether you'd rather see this or that. You can talk to Joe, or, or myself, or Graves, if you've deposited some money. And that's, a lot of times, that'll help you just stream things up. It just streamlines the, the design process if you have questions or something, so.
Mr. Yarworth, just two quick questions. In terms of the, when we file the subdivision, can we also combine the request for approval of the cluster under twenty-two A through D? Because the planning board has to grant that. We need, we need a special permit.
Special permit, you'll, you'll submit a special permit for the cluster on a special permit form.
Right, oh, okay.
And that will also, you may also need earth removal and.
He's gonna need earth removal.
And you may need groundwater protection district there.
Yeah, I think it's up there.
So you need to see what, I don't remember what you're in. So those are all in one form, you just check off all the ones you need. You probably need earth removal just for, cuz it's, you know, moving there, throwing on the site. If it's groundwater protection, I'm not, I'm not sure.
And so the.
Is it in GPD? It is. Yeah, you have the map here.
And one last question, for the Board of Health, I knew we needed drainage and septic review. Is there another?
So Graves does one report for both boards.
Okay.
So if you submit concurrently.
Yes.
So did they, is your protest? Did Jeff go and witness them, or you just did one formal ones?
No.
Formal, okay, so, so you're gonna have to file with them for perk tests. You're gonna have to file with them for any stormwater, inspection of the stormwater basins for the permeability tests. So Jeff, or his, somebody from his office, come out and look at those. So, so that money you'll pay to Board of Health, and they'll supervise that testing. But then when the, when the project comes in, we kind of split the costs between each board, and then he does one report for both boards. And we can walk you through that as you get, get forward. And as you get further into the design, if I was here, I'd be looking at the design before you submit it, cuz I'll have comments probably on things, like I just did with the well.
Right.
I'm still available for that, I think, if they still want me here, and Joe's still available for a while, if they want him. And they'll be the new guy.
If Joe wants to be.
I don't know how long the new guy will wanna use either one of us, so I'm not quite sure how it's gonna work on planning.
It's starting in June.
Well, oh, then.
June twenty-fourth, I think, yeah. So he'll be full-time, so there'll be a full-time planner here. But he.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was just calling, but we need to go for a formal protest out of the Board of Health.
Danny was out there for perk, for a protest for septic, but Graves might need for the soil evaluation.
For the basin.
For the basin.
Basin, I'm sorry, I think I misspoke on that, yeah, so, so, yeah, Graves does the basin one.
Quite an elevation change on that Lot One, too, huh? It's like twenty-five feet up in the air.
Stanley, you've never seen a hill, have you? Every time Stanley gets done with a lot, they're flat.
Like a bulldozer.
Cuz the gravel's good.
All right.
Thank you very much.
I think you got the answer you're looking for, right?
Yes, yes, thank you very much.
And good luck with it. I think this is a good project.
Be shaped. Thanks.
Thank you.
You like it.
Glad you worked with us on it.
Great. Thanks. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Oh, God, we have more?
No, this is, this is hopefully quick. What have we done? The, the two remaining items are, you need to appoint someone, or reappoint someone to the Southeastern Regional Planning District from the planning board. Chris has been the representative date, so I didn't know. Serpent contacted the town and wanted to know who our appointees were gonna be, so that's why it's on the agenda.
So Joe, just as a comment, Mike said he wanted to be the one for the select board, so I haven't notified Brian, but. Oh, right, but. I used to do it for, as an appointee for the planning board and the select boards. I used to do both. Last year, you appointed Chris, cuz you didn't like the job I was doing. And then this year, I won't be here for the select board, so Mike, the new planner, would be a good.
Mike Mala?
Yeah. So he.
What? Yeah, we already did.
That was.
Well, you already did.
That's already, it was just signing the decision. The decision was already made.
We said make sure Ray wasn't here. Hey, Ray.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I'm fine with appointing Chris back on there, as I represent.
I would, I would welcome that. I enjoyed it.
Was there a motion?
It's your job to get grants now, if you're honored.
Yeah.
I've been paying attention, Chris. I've been speaking to Mr. Walker and everyone in, in between.
Are you okay with me appointing him? Okay, do we have to have a vote on that, or?
Yep.
All right, Stan, you wanna make the motion, cuz.
Make a motion to appoint Chris to Serpent.
Can I second that? I'll second it as chair, I guess. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Yay, that was a quick one.
And then. Don't think I gave it to you. Bear with me for a second.
What?
As you know, there's been some activity in drafting a new. A new master plan.
Yeah.
I didn't realize, the first meeting since I've been here was a couple of weeks ago. The time period for it to be wrapped up is June thirtieth.
Well, I don't think that's gonna happen.
The guy's leaving, though, right?
He's basically, in, in your package of material, toward the end, is an email that went to the chair of the planning, of the master planning committee.
But you have to remember, the master planning committee chair reports to us.
Again, I, I'm just trying to pass on information, so you know where you were at.
Okay.
And the, the, I guess, new, or, or the, the person that's kind of taking over for the moment for wrapping up the master plan. A man by the name of Grant King proposed to the master planning committee, this is the timeline. One of the, the dates that perhaps is important is mid-June, a master plan open house event to answer questions. I thought if the planning board was going to participate in anything, it might make sense to try to move that to June seventeenth, which is when you're meeting. The nineteenth is a holiday, so they can't meet anyway. And invite them in, so that, you know, you, first of all, get brought up to speed, hopefully, and secondly, are able to weigh in on, in on what is being proposed. Again, I, don't blame the messenger here.
No, I'm not blaming you, I'm just saying, I'm really mad. Like, I read it, and I was pissed off. Like, first of all, we just went to town meeting and did the whole town center district, and they basically were like, don't care what the planning board said. Oh, yeah, this is their committee, but we don't care. Let's change every single thing they did for town center district. No, absolutely not. I will never vote yes on that ever.
Yeah, I, I, again, I just.
So I'm like, we asked them to please send information to us, and it looks like someone from Serpent wrote the whole thing without the plant, the committee even being there, and then handed it in. It's like, I don't want Serpent to write it. I want them to help our people write it for our town, and help us make sure it's what we want for the town. And I feel like it's like a carbon copy of one from I don't know where, and comparing us to Metropoiet or whatever, I'm like, that's idiotic. Like, we're not, we're not a beach town. I don't want a bunch of little bungalows downtown all over the place, so it looks like a rundown, old-fashioned, I don't even know. I'm like, I, I can't, I don't even like it at all. I mean, I'm a hard no right now on it, because most of the stuff in there is just, it didn't even go with what the survey asked for or anything.
Again, I, I wanted to bring it up, because you've got a June thirtieth deadline. And again, I'm not, I'm not looking to justify doing anything with this, other than telling you what your option is.
What happens on June thirtieth, we don't have a master plan?
It can, it doesn't matter. If we don't accept it, it doesn't get it.
No, their contracts, so it's.
I want them out, so I'm good with that. I think we need to sit down and look at it, because we should never have given it to a committee, cuz it was a total mess right from the beginning.
I, I don't know what the history was. The only other.
When did you get it?
I wanna call it an option or alternative. If things aren't completed by June thirtieth, Serpent and towns, member towns have twenty hours of technical assistance. And, and I know Serpent hasn't won your, your hearts and souls here, but cities and towns have twenty hours of, at least towns do. Twenty hours of technical assistance to the planning board, and twenty hours of technical assistance to the board, of the select board. So you have at least that as a, whatever you wanna call it, as an option to finish this thing off, if it can't get wrapped up by the end of the year. I mean, I, I, as someone who kind of came in at the tail end of this, frankly, I, I was surprised that nothing was going on. I mean, I've been here since the end of November, and the first meeting was a couple of weeks ago. But it is what it is. So.
Do you have a copy of that, Joe?
I'm sorry?
He emailed it to us.
Yeah, did, did you have a copy of?
I don't have a clean copy. The only thing I have, and I asked, actually today, I have an edited copy that went to the, the master planning committee. But I don't have a, a clean copy without edits and.
Pretty sure their intention, okay, is to get the thing completed through the master plan. get the thing completed through the Master Plan Committee, and then given to us to look it over and approve it or not approve it. I don't agree personally with that, that approach, because I think it is our document, it is one hundred percent our responsibility, and there's so much there, that for us to just whisk through it, would be doing our town a disservice. And since we are the governing body, and we have the right to write our own plan, not that I want to, meaning, I do want to, but not that, a lot of people, some people put some work into it.
There's some really nice parts of it, like, there are parts, but the parts, the recommendations they have, I'm like, they don't even know what we want here. Like, nothing in the recommendations I've read so far, I'm like, what town is this about? Because this is not about Plainville, I've done so many surveys with all the committees I'm on, and I'm like, well, that doesn't match our survey, that doesn't match our survey, that doesn't even match the survey we just did. It's not even like remotely close to anything.
So I think for us to do the proper job of vetting this, we would have to spend some legit time and update it ourselves, but I think they don't even want that to happen until the Master Plan Committee, and this was the, what was lost in the transition to the Master Plan Committee, like, I have, with all respect, she's a great lady, and she's smart, and she, she's been a good chairperson, but there's action plans where they oversee departments, whether or not they're keeping up with the, their end of, like, the master plan. You know, I mean, and, and this is the Master Plan Committee, of which these people, they're great people, but their experience is very limited, and, you know, some of these things that they're talking about.
We're not policing departments to be, that they're doing what's supposed to be on there, I mean
And then it also states, also states that there's, there's types of governments, like, you know, select board, planning, or this, that are in charge of following up via the master plan, and that's, like, almost unrealistic, not only, it's, it's, some of the stuff doesn't even fall, fall under the curfew of their department, or their board, or their, whatever they are, you know, and, and it's just, I don't know how to explain it. It's just not written for Plainville right now.
So you were unhappy with Phil?
I, I liked Phil a lot, but when I found out that the that, that it was paid, the, the funding for it was paid by the Massachusetts, like, Housing Committee Plan, it was paid by Massachusetts Housing for the cost of this, um, to be written. So, I mean, it's so hugely written about housing and zoning and bylaws, and it's, and it's all, um, it, 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 clearly, that section has been written by someone in Massachusetts Housing.
No, that's true.
I don't think so.
So, so, so the, the grants for the master plan were
Ten hourino, Chris, so, I'm going
The grants for the master plan were fifty thousand from the DLTA funding for two years, twenty-five thousand a year from Serpent. And then I filed a one-stop grant, through the one-stop program, which goes to multiple boards through the state for the remainder of the master plan monies, based on the estimate that Serpent gave me. And the reason we went with Serpent is because they gave me fifty thousand off the bat to get started. So when the, the response from that goes back, it goes out to a bunch of committees, and then they, they allocate amongst themselves who's gonna fund it. So the funding for the seventy-five came from Mass Housing Partnership, that came with no criteria, it was just funding for our master plan, now, they have a housing background, and typically, master plans address housing, that's why it came from that portion of the state, but it came with no strings attached, they didn't write it, they, all they do is I have to send them the bills, and they pay the bills, there's no, there's no strings, there's no, their ulterior motive, obviously, is they want housing, but that doesn't impact how Serpent writes it, Serpent has written this themselves, and, and that's what you're looking at. And one of the problems was, they didn't get clear guidance at any time, because there was no consensus, really, amongst the town or the committee as to what to do, so they had to come up with something. Now, unfortunately, that process has dragged on, and now we have two months until the funding runs out, so on June thirtieth, you will have no money, and if you wanna rewrite it yourself, you can do that, but you'll be doing it yourself, other than forty hours of technical support from Serpent, if you wanna go back to them again. Otherwise, you can go up for another grant for something, but you probably won't get it from the state, so I don't know where you'd go looking for it, but Or you can do it yourself, if you guys wanna sit there and edit a hundred-page report, go for it.
I mean, it's not only a hundred page, and you have to go through, I mean, the first, some of it's just telling you what the town is, and that's that's all accurate, that's great, like, you have this much housing, you have this much land, you have this much left, blah, blah, and they did all that, that's great, but then when it goes into suggestions to change things, it's like, where the hell did you get these ideas, and shame on, like, everyone for not, like, the whole point of having a committee was for meetings to be called and sit down with these people, not just be like, here, do it for us, and let us know what happens, or have him say, oh, I'll get back to them when I'm done. I don't know what the hell happened, it's like, it just fell off the rails, and it's like, it should have been, someone should, somebody should have been saying, we need to meet and talk about this, because we haven't had any contact, don't just write the master plan for us.
So, so, aren't you both on the master
I'm not on the master plan, no.
I am, and Thomas.
Thomas?
Yeah.
So, I mean, didn't you bring this up earlier, though, Chris?
We weren't at that point, where we leapt from, from discussion of, like, even some basic housing changes in the future and different thing, to, it was like, we were talking about some stuff, about a missing middle and a couple of different things, and then I don't know what happened or why it happened like this, it disappeared off the face of the earth for like, four months, five months. Never a meeting was held, and then all of a sudden, two weeks ago, we got a plan put in front of us, that none of us in the Master Plan Committee wrote, or even got to review until now.
Which one of the things we said in the very beginning was, we wanted it
And my goal was to always update you guys along the steps, but I never got those steps from anybody. That was never presented to us, like that.
Can I, um
It felt rushed, like they just wanna get it done, and it's like, well, we didn't wanna just get it done, we wanted to do it how we wanted it.
How many pages, Joe?
Ninety-five, yeah.
Ninety-five?
Um, let me make a confession here, that when I agreed to, to do this for twelve hours a week, uh, the, the two elephants in the room that I was hoping would never show up was Heather Hill and the master plan. Because again, I, I'm, you know, just trying to both learn and keep things afloat. When I learned that the master plan, I didn't know that it had a June thirtieth deadline, and when I saw by virtue of this email that it ends June thirtieth, that's why I thought, you know, this has gotta be addressed. Now, my point is do you wanna try to salvage what you may think is unsalvageable, then I think we need to, you know, what, what I'd suggest is reach out to Serpent and have them here at the June fifth meeting, to talk about, all right, next steps, and can we incorporate that public meeting as part of your June seventeenth meeting, to, to try to pick up the pieces if they're salv, salvageable, and get it to the point where if it's not complete, get it to the point where forty hours will complete it, or is it just a lost cause? I don't know.
I mean, I don't think it's a lost cause, I think it can be done, I mean, we might have to do more of it, but I would like them to come here and explain why they wrote it, without any consult from the town.
Again, I don't know, I attended one meeting.
So, so let me just
I did.
So, so, so number one, I, I agree, and I, and I, when I stopped working here, I was fed up with master plans, so I haven't I left it to the committee to deal with, I'm not dealing with that crap anymore. I was totally fed up with, um, the bigger than I committee.
Yeah.
The, um, the, the, I think, so, so June thirtieth, it ends, you have to have something. You have to send a product to Mass Housing Partnership, I'm not sure if they need to have an approved master plan, so you could probably send, I can check with Serpent, you can probably send the draft master plan, stamp it draft, say, this has been submitted, this is the work product, finish out all the billing with Serpent, you don't, the planning board, I don't think, has to approve it by then, there's no requirement that we approve it, it's just, it has to be completed, a, a plan has to be completed, this is the work that was completed for the money they gave us, I, I think, and we can check, we can clarify with Serpent. Um, and then, if you wanna write the changes yourselves, you can do that, and then you can vote to approve, you don't have to use the committee, you can do it yourselves, you can do whatever you want. Like I said, you're the final arbiters of the plan, so you can do it any way you please, if you wanna use forty hours of Serpent, you can use it, if you wanna do it yourselves, you can do it yourselves.
I, I like the idea of the master plan, doing whatever they can, because they, they put time in. And they've been subject to, I mean, what I have, and, you know, what, when I say subject, no one killed themselves, I'm just saying, it was one of those things that we kept asking, you know, where are we, what, why is it not coming, why are we not talking about this, why, you know, because I've been talking to you guys in the planning board going, I got nothing for you, I, I can't give you anything, because I don't have anything.
So, again, you, you have, you have to submit something with, with the final bill to Mass Housing Partnership, I'm hoping you can just submit the draft plan.
As long as the draft
It'll have the pitches in it, it'll be a draft, it won't be accepted by the town, and there's no requirement, as far as I know, that it ever has to be accepted. So that would satisfy what, what we needed to do for the money we got from the, from the state.
What about crossing things off we don't want?
And then at that point, at that point, the funding will be over, the state will be out of it, and you can sit down and decide how you wanna proceed from there. I just
I know, but I just worry that if we hand them something, and they're like, well, we're gonna accept it regardless, I don't wanna have stuff in that we don't want.
The master plan is accepted by the planning board, Mass Housing Partnership will, will keep it on record, I, I
We're the only ones that can make changes for it.
Yeah, I don't think they accept it or not accept it, they just wanna see, I think they just wanna see a work
The work was done.
So, so they'll see a draft, and we'll, this is not yet approved by the planning board, they're gonna, they wanna work on it on their own for a bit, and I think that'll be okay, but I just have to
And I think
Find out.
Once we get that draft done, I think it's time to move on, to make it our document, and hit it hard, and get it
So, the good thing is Grant, do you know Grant?
Yeah, yeah.
So Grant's real good, he's the number two guy at Serpent, he's got a lot more experience than Phil, um, he's really good to work with, but you're not gonna, you're only gonna have, not gonna have enough to January thirtieth, uh, June thirtieth, so
Go with Grant.
Grant, you all have Grant, Grant's, Grant's real good.
Oh, yeah, Grant's good. Grant's his name, it's not a grant.
... So it sounds like you guys need to close out whatever contractual injury you have with Serpent, and if it can be at least accepted as draft, even though it's not immediately approved, you guys have to close out that piece, and then you can choose to work with the committee, maybe you guys
No, I'm not with the committee, no, because all they did was fight, I'm not doing it, I will absolutely not do it.
A lot of their work was
If you guys go through the plan, you identify sections that might need some work on the writing, maybe you could task them to rewrite certain sections, then, then there'll be no fighting, right, you just say, hey, we need this
No, I think we can do it, I don't, I don't think that they were even, they, I, I disagree that, that they're the best option, so I
I mean, the committee or Serpent?
The committee.
So you could, you could task Serpent with doing the forty hours, the request that you give them, if you're uncomfortable doing some of the writing, with, with the forty hours of
I've seen their writing, it's terrible.
Well, then don't use them, do it yourself, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah.
I haven't seen their writing, I've known what it was like, so if your writing is better
I mean, I just feel like a lot of it, you can just take in, look at what they wrote, and basically just change it, to not say, like, how they, how strict or, or lax they are, just be like, no, I'm not doing that, I'm not doing that, just be like, continue following the, you know, town center district.
Again, I think you, I think you can do any, anything you want, just be aware, you won't have funding other than that forty hours. And I'm hoping we can close out the state and everything with the draft, with the draft, and just, we have to give them a document. So you'll say, this is a document provided by the Master Plan Committee, it's been submitted to the planning board, there's been no vote taken, that hasn't been
That story is
To the state, and say that
I think we need to finish the product
We'll make, we'll make, I'll make a presentation to you guys, of how we can break it into segments and attack it over time. Are you okay with that?
To, to which guys?
To you guys, to you.
Me?
No, the, the chap, planning board.
Oh, oh, um, you're, you're not gonna have much time, so I'm guessing
No, I'm not talking about getting it done by per se the deadline, the draft idea is a good idea.
Draft, the draft is just written with the pitches and everything on, the Master Plan Committee, all the Master Plan Committee needs to do is vote to forward that to the planning board. You guys can look at it and say, okay, it's been forwarded to us, we're gonna forward that as, as our work product to the state,
Draft, right across the top.
And then we're done, and then we're done, and then you guys can all have as much time as you want to work on it, I think you can do that, I just
Let's find out.
There's no requirement, I'm aware of, that you have to have, give them an approved master plan by the planning board.
Okay, it's almost nine o'clock.
This is our, this is our basis, and we're gonna, we're gonna just fine tune it from there.
Are you okay with that, Joe?
Well, I, I'm okay with it.
Well, I don't want to do anything with that master plan, it's terrible. Uh, do we have to approve minutes?
Uh, there are two sets. Again, they're at the end of
You wanna do them together, because are both of you here, both those meetings?
I'm trying to remember now.
Four, three, let's see.
It was absent, the third, no one was absent, and the sixth, the twenty-ninth, Stan was late, but that, he's still eligible to
Okay. So, is everyone good with the minutes?
Yeah.
Do you wanna make a motion to approve them?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from
Third and
April, third and April twenty-ninth.
Okay.
Two thousand twenty-four.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yay. Oh, my God, okay. So, see you on June fourth? Does someone want to adjourn at eight forty?
Fourth or June fifth?
Oh, whatever.
Someone said fifth, and someone said fourth.
I know, oh, June fif, I had both numbers in my head.
I thought I heard a motion to adjourn.
Yep.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, I don't know what's happening, okay, so Chris?